John, did you, just since you're our in-house IT guy? Did you hear anything about our website? Is that?
Yeah. I got the, I left my notifications on for an email last night. So when Anne emailed, ding, like, what is it? Ah.
Do we know what the deal was? Is it back up?
It should be back up, right?
Yeah, it's up.
Okay.
That's, I sent you that text this afternoon.
Yeah, and then I talked to Mark Hamilton. He said, do you know, the website's down? And I said, I think it's back up. He says, well, it's down right now.
No, it wasn't. So what happened is, this is me talking way out of school here. Something called DNS, whatever that is.
Through directories or other?
Those are different for whoever's supplying your internet all over the country. And they take different amounts of time to, like, regather their thoughts after something like that. There's a way you can make it speed it up, but you, he would have had to go, like, reset his modem and then restart his computer, or could just wait. But it was, like, on phones. We turned off our Wi-Fi in here in Verizon. It was up on Verizon's network. And then I actually called up to where I used to work in Minnesota. And I'm like, Sue, go to this website. She's like, okay. She's like, what about it? And I'm like, are you seeing the website? She's like, oh, yeah, it's a pretty picture of that mountain. So.
You're like, all right, it's up. I didn't need to keep you, John, if you were hitting somewhere.
No, you're, you're good.
I just thought that seventeen years ago, buying the domain name, funny. With N Z.
Yeah.
You're on YouTube.
Okay. Yeah, I was thinking, my neighbor had the website ski.com.
Yeah.
And he had it for a long time. He had a ski business down in Glenwood, and he sold it, like, a kind of like a tour agent.
Guiding or something like that?
No, not even that. I bet that's worth hundreds of thousands of dollars now.
Oh, easily, yeah.
Yeah.
She's like, wow. Kathy, did you print something for?
Did you send an email to me?
Oh, no, I'm not like, oh, no, this is your copy. That's the whole packet.
What are you looking for?
I thought you.
It's, should be in there, if I'm thinking what you're looking.
The contract?
Yours is in there, and I have.
Okay, you have copies for other people?
I sure do.
Okay, awesome.
Kevin, do you want one? Do you want one?
Um, no.
Uh, what was I doing?
Kathy, are you staying in Redstone?
Yeah.
Are your young ladies coming home?
They're coming home for Christmas, for about a week. Be fun. Looking forward to that, for sure.
All right. What cheese?
So did you try that with, like, the setting? Like, you hit what you like, and then you do something with it? With the camera?
You know, I may have not done it correct. It's really not doing anything. I had to play with it, which is fine.
So Kathy, I know, I think I ask this every year, but there's no way we can, like, on the December twenty-first, well, no, it would be the December fourteenth meeting, have the board pre-authorize signing of bills so we wouldn't have to have the December twenty-eighth meeting? No?
I don't think you can do that. I don't, you know, just be, that would be really a question, I guess, for Renee. I don't think it's ever been done before.
Or, or I guess we're just late on bills, right? We just wait another three weeks to pay all those bills.
We were thinking a Zoom meeting.
Okay.
So at, like, eight AM or whatever, but just a Zoom for, it just has to be four people. They don't have to be here.
Okay.
I, I really
I don't think so.
Don't think that there's a way that we could avoid, particularly with some of the, some of the way some of our bills come in, to delay them three weeks could potentially end up getting us finance charges on them.
Yep, okay. Well, I, I'm sure we can get four people.
On a Zoom?
Yeah.
You know, and like, if, if you did it, like, at eight AM or really early before, you know, cut into anybody's day.
Yep.
I've taken the week off, but I could just set it up and do it from home.
Okay. All righty.
Are you around?
Probably. I might go to Denver to see my mom, but probably around.
What's the matter? What's the face?
Hmm, just, what?
Okay.
Oh, jeez.
Everything okay?
Mm-hmm.
Getting old is fun. It's like relearning things every two weeks or every week. I was trying to.
Oh, you know what? Do you want me to turn those around?
Hey, how's it going, Raleigh?
Hi, Raleigh.
We felt we is that biggest crowd we can. Might have to get some crowd management people in here.
We're, we're not in here by ourselves, Anne, so.
Do you need power for anything, Raleigh? Or is you got the battery? Okay.
Or, yeah, that's what I meant, next week.
Looks like I gotta make all the decisions tonight. Oh, oh, Erica, darn it. Let's ready to start. Quorum schmorum. Having to check your emails this afternoon?
No, it's not.
I've gotten texts from two other trustees saying, I'll be there soon.
We, we got that in our email, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is one revised from this afternoon.
Okay, all right, sure, that'd be great.
Substantial changes, but that's the current one. That's.
Is that what you were wondering?
Yeah. Seems to be on track. How was your day? Good. Okay, good.
We got Louise. We can rock and roll.
Kathy, I say, just go for it.
Saw Ronnie at City Market.
Yeah, she's waiting on something there. Back, okay, I take it?
Yeah. Rolled into the driveway and jumped on the bike.
We all just walked in. Except for Dan.
I'm Marty. Welcome, everybody. Kathy knew y'all were gonna be late. She started the meeting ten minutes late. Agenda. You put six-ten for roll call, so.
Oh.
That's totally, that's what I was following.
That means I, I snagged it from a template of students of the month. Sorry.
Kathy, because that means it's actually earlier.
If being six-oh-three will call the meeting to order. Kathy, would you roll call?
Marty Silverstein.
Here.
Dan Richardson.
Here.
Heather Henry. Ben Baumfach. Bonnie Kitching. Luis Iyanis.
Here.
Erica Sparhong.
Here.
All right, Ronnie should be here momentarily. Item number one is a consent agenda, accounts payable, trustee minutes from October twenty-second, the executive session, and trustee minutes from November ninth, our regular meeting. Any questions or comments on that?
I did change a couple of typos on the ten-twenty-two. I had Kathy Derby not Town Clerk. I had a few things going on, so it's all good. No, no, just little typo things.
Okay. Renee, on the accounts payable, the note at the top, payment to Colorado Mountain College for two Cleta, C L E T A students. Is that the police academy?
Yep.
Great, thanks. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda. Second.
Motion by Heather, seconded by Erica, Erica Sparhong.
Okay, remember the name.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, item number three, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to address an item that's not on the agenda?
Generalities, because I won't be able to stay for the entire meeting. Car to drop off.
But is this regarding the lot split?
No.
Okay.
It is not. We'll be talking then, too. Don't worry.
In that case, if you could give us your name, just generally where you're from, and you can have three minutes and just direct your comments to me.
All right. Anne Crimmer, five-zero-one Mesa Verde Avenue. And generally, I wanted to touch on town projects and budgets. And I want to urge the board to consider cost benefits of any large dollar amounts. Specifically, how many people would benefit from money spent? And how many people get affected by perhaps any taxes or property taxes that would be needed to benefit a certain number of people? I think you probably know what I'm talking about. But I would, I would hope that you would keep that in mind when we're talking about possibly putting taxes on the ballot in the spring.
Do you mean the aquatics facility?
It's generally towards that, but any large project, I worry about having many people taxed for a lower participation rate. I don't know what the participation rates are for town residents in our recreational facilities, for the ones that require payment to attend. Certainly, the parks get used heavily. But I think that's something that we need as a town to keep in mind, and whether we need to, you know, start asking for donations, I, I don't know. But anytime I see a, a tax proposal coming up, I'm like, so, that's all. Thank you.
Well, that's, that's why I always give the voters a choice. But thank you. I appreciate the accountability. All right, is there anyone else who'd like to address the board on an item that's not on the agenda? Okay. For Kathy, do you guys know if any of our folks on Zoom are here for public comment?
I don't believe so.
Okay. And just for the folks who just joined us, are you guys here to speak on something on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay, just checking. Okay, seeing no other persons wanting to talk about something not on the agenda, we'll move on to trustee comments. Anybody got any? Erica, you look prepared and ready? No?
I don't actually have any.
Okay.
Nope, I haven't had any meetings to report on since our last one.
Okay. I'll offer.
We were just here. We were just here.
Okay, well, since our last meeting, our varsity soccer team won the state championship. So again, congratulations to Roaring Fork High Soccer Team, Boy Soccer Team. What a fantastic showing. So kudos to Coach Forbes and all the assistant coaches and the Booster Club and Athletic Director and everybody. She was just fantastic. I had a Rafta meeting two weeks ago, and we, you know, considered the budget, no big changes there. And I had talked about the first and last mile grant for members, and we're moving ahead with that. And at our next meeting, we'll hopefully work out some details and what that, what that looks like and what, what you have to do to qualify and whether recycle contributions count or not. So we're moving ahead with that. But no, nothing final yet. If you, again, if you have specific thoughts, let me know. Thank you to our community for participating in the town interviews and the town manager interview process. We had a community meet and greet last Wednesday and pretty decent turnout. Thank you to the community panel who helped interview our candidates. And I think the, the process went as well this time as it did the last time, and hopefully with a better result. So thank you, everybody, for participating. I checked in with Jay Engstrom, our Chair of Planning and Zoning, and just checked into, on Chart Carbondale. And it seems like that process, believe it or not, it's not perfect, but it seems like P and Z was, he wasn't speaking on behalf of everybody else, but I think the recent updates were, are good to receive, and I just appreciate all staff's help keeping that project going. And then lastly, I think I brought up Valley Meals requesting funding from Garfield County because their funding is falling short. Valley Meals provides delivered meals to seniors and those in need, or Garfield County's program provides congregate meals. And unfortunately, right now, there's still, still no additional support committed by Garfield County. They indicated that in their first meeting in December, they will consider a smaller ask, but it may mean that some of our constituents won't be receiving, won't continue to receive the meals they've been receiving to date. So that was a little disappointing, but we haven't given up yet, so. All right, that's all I had. Last call, anybody else? Ronnie, I don't want to put you on the spot, but any, any comments? Do you want me to? We're just about to move on. I'm gonna, I, I need you to get to a mic. Okay.
Real quickly, Coventure had another resource gathering meeting that started out with kind of the workforce development and identification, and went on to develop into a conversation about the employers and what makes the Roaring Fork Valley a special place to work based on employer reputation. And so that's the next step in getting the back-to-work initiative off the ground. RWAAP also had a board meeting, and it seems that after twenty-plus years, the reputation has exceeded expectations, and RWAAP is now being asked to weigh in on a number of different initiatives relative to the Lower Colorado River Basin. And I'll just close by reminding everybody that the COVID trajectory is not looking great, according to public health. The weeks following Thanksgiving should spike, so everybody in the community, please be very careful. Use best precautions and enjoy your Thanksgiving week. Thank you.
That was impressive, Ronnie, to come in cold like that. Mark, how about from you?
No, you can hear from me in a little bit.
Okay. All right, so we are moving on to item number six. Public hearing for five-twenty Mesa Verde Final Platte. The applicant is Ryan Lee from Form V, Form Five, and the location is five-twenty Mesa Verde F. John? That'd be me. So the proposal is to subdivide lot ten of the Colorado Meadows subdivision into two lots, lot ten A and lot ten B. Ten A would remain how it's currently configured with a single-family home on it. The proposal is to construct a single-family home eventually on the back lot. The application requires approval of a preliminary plat and a final subdivision plat. The planning commission is the approving authority for the preliminary plat, and it was reviewed at three meetings on July fifteenth, September thirtieth, and October fourteenth with lengthy discussions. So I'm sure you've noticed in your packet with the minutes. After requesting that the applicant make certain changes, such as amending or adding a plat note that no ADUs will be allowed on either lot, and also establishing a maintenance agreement for the easement for access to lot ten B, the commission approved the preliminary plat, and that's why it's before you for the final plat. Otherwise, it would have died at the planning commission. As noted before, the Board of Trustees is the approving authority for the final plat. The property is designated as, as developed neighborhoods in the future land use map in the 2013 comprehensive plan. Developed neighborhoods consist of residential subdivisions that are unlikely to change significantly and are almost entirely built out with few vacant lots. In Karo Meadows, there's actually only one vacant lot. The designation calls for continuation of the uses allowed under the zoning and subdivision approvals. Access is proposed to be via an easement over lot ten A to lot ten B. Section six-point-two-point-four C of the U D C states that, or that's lot and block design, states that the use of an easement for principal access to a lot should not be allowed unless the approving authority allows it. And that would be the Board of Trustees. So with Planning, Zoning Commission, they could not approve that easement, but for final plat, the Board of Trustees is the approving authority. Lot ten A and lot ten B meet all the lot size requirements and setback requirements for the residential low-density district. So if the board is inclined to approve the application, staff would recommend the following motion, move to approve the final plat with the conditions and findings indicated, and direct staff to bring back approval documents for the board's consideration. And there is a typo in the packets for the recommendation in there. It's not a site plan, it's just final plat, and my apologies. Okay. Thanks, John. And I forgot to mention this beforehand, that the way we'll handle this hearing is, John just gave us his introduction. The board will ask John and staff if there are any questions. Is there, is there an applicant here, John, that we know of?
The owner is present, and then the applicant, Ryan Lee, is zooming in.
Okay, so if they would like to give any sort of presentation, we'll allow them. We'll give the board an opportunity to ask questions of the applicant, and then we'll open it up to the public for comments, and then bring it back to the board, close the public hearing for deliberation. With that, are there questions of John?
I have some questions.
Okay, Ben.
Couple things, John, if you could clarify for everybody's benefit. There were some references in, we had a lot of comments from the public that we read in the packet, and we appreciate those. First of all, if those are submitted by anybody who's here tonight, it's really helpful to, to know how the neighbors feel about a project like this. And can you just clarify for us, John? I asked you in an email, but so that everybody gets the same information, the issue about whether there's required street frontage, and you just mentioned the easement requirement. Can you just clarify a little bit of the history of that? Because that seemed to be a real important point for a lot of neighbors.
The code previous to the U D C required that each lot actually have, I believe it was twenty-five feet of street frontage to, you know, a main artillery or just basically any right away within the town. With the passage of the U D C and the discussions that took place with the writing of the U D C, P and Z, the public, citizens, and staff all removed, all felt that it would be best to actually remove that twenty-five-foot requirement. So that opened up more lots for development. Say if a lot was adjacent to an alley, that wouldn't really count as the twenty-five foot for the requirement that was in the previous code. So there is no requirement for street frontage. Okay. So can I piggyback? Okay. So can I piggyback on that? So John, it sounds like since I wasn't involved in those, that was a deliberate discussion about that particular item.
Correct, it was, yes.
Wasn't it?
Yep.
So street frontage is not required, but in order to access it through a lot through an easement, we have to approve it. It's not a by right sort of thing.
Correct.
Okay. And you said there's no other areas in the code that are, I mean, that one's met. So there aren't any parts of the code that are not met. Everything in the code is met for the lot size, coverage, all those sort of specifications. There's no, what do you call it, exceptions that they're asking for?
Correct.
Okay.
No variances, no exceptions?
Variances, thank you. It's been a little while. Another thing that came up in some of the comments from neighbors was that staff had originally recommended against approval.
Correct.
Do you want to narrate that for us at all? I mean, I know that, you know, it's okay for Staff and Planning and Zoning Commission to disagree. Sometimes changes happen along the way. But just so that we're clear, at this point, is Staff saying one thing and Planning and Zoning is saying another? Or has it changed substantially since their recommendation? Just kind of bring us up to speed on that.
Originally, when the application came in, the staff wanted to deny it because it didn't meet the intent, we felt, of the comprehensive plan, especially the established neighborhoods, because we thought that it didn't really nod towards the original subdivision approvals for Colorado Meadows. It was approved for a certain density, a certain amount of lots were platted for the subdivision itself. And P and Z, originally, if you read the minutes, they had a tie vote for the first meeting. So it went ahead and they continued it for more input from the applicant and the public. And also on, on staff. At that time, we also still chose to recommend denial. But P and Z felt that, well, they've added the easement, the plat notes for the ADUs, so that it's not really adding that much more density. And as, as you know, P and Z is pretty pro infill and housing and so on and so forth. So with that, with P and Z approving the preliminary plat, staff's bringing forward that recommendation or approval from P and Z.
Okay, thanks. As far as the ADU issue goes, that was also mentioned in a few places in the application. So if they didn't go through this process, they could do an ADU, but it would be maxed out at, was it 500 square feet?
Correct.
So you'd get the same sort of effect potentially of density, cars, that sort of thing, but a smaller footprint, a smaller building.
Correct.
And they've eliminated that. So it's like this or the ADU, but not both.
Right.
Okay. And, you know, one question I have that we might get to later, if we get to that point, is just the, you know, they, I guess the applicant voluntarily put in a no ADUs plat note.
Correct.
Kind of how that worked. They've, they've said in their application that this is for long-term local, you know, kind of workforce housing. So if they, if people were concerned that it's going to become short-term rental, would there be the potential that they could offer something like a no short-term rentals plat note, just like this, a no ADUs?
They could, if they felt so, yes.
Okay. All right. That's all I have. Thanks.
Other questions? Marty?
Yeah, I thought, correct me if I'm wrong, I thought our intent with the info was to make it easier to get ADUs?
I believe the intent was more so for ADUs, but also for, you know, new developments on vacant lots.
Okay, but this is taking one lot and dividing it in two.
Correct.
And creating two separate units that will be, one will be sold separately.
Correct.
And how do we know that it will go towards workforce housing?
That we don't really know.
We don't know. We have their word on it. We're not doubting their word, but I'm just saying, we don't know.
Yep, we've, we've seen that in the past.
More than once. Okay, thank you.
Need to think on that. No other questions? Heather, nothing? Okay. Ryan or the applicants, would anyone like to present? Looks like Ryan's ready.
How are you doing tonight?
Good, how are you?
Good. I'm glad I could run over and say hello in person really quickly.
Yeah, he was just here a minute ago.
Can you allow screen sharing?
You may get notification that you have to accept. All right, Kevin?
No, that's when we switch from attendees to panels. You should be able to go, Ryan.
I've got it now. Thank you.
There we go.
Great. So hopefully going through this presentation, we'll address some of the questions that have been brought up already. So the first thing is understanding how we got to a lot split decision. And it was really taking a look at the comprehensive plan.
Hey, Ryan, can you do something to enlarge that? Maybe have that cover your whole screen and then increase the size of the document.
We're just seeing our packet on your screen. You might not be sharing the right thing. I'm not sure.
Okay, let's see.
Let me see your chat and stuff.
Let's try this again.
No, I don't think that's what he wants to share.
There we go.
Is that better?
That's better. We're looking at the chapter one of the comp plan.
Yep. So we've based this application on the current comprehensive plan. There's some key aspects of this. Welcoming new people and new ideas. Maintaining the town's small, compact form is paramount. It's clear that some growth and change is inevitable. Small town form and compact size, diversity and housing types. That comes up again, encouraging multifamily housing and higher density housing by diversity in housing types. Encouraging accessory dwelling units. Future growth accommodated by infill. Various housing types will accommodate a mix of household types. Again, diverse housing, various housing options, and promoting the development of diversity of housing types. So it's really a common theme in the current comprehensive plan of diverse housing and multifamily housing. There's also mention of infill and redevelopment in some key areas as important component of managing change. Again, demolition and replacement of new structures result in increase in dwelling units or non-residential square footage, talking about infill and pro accessory dwelling units. So back in August of last year, we, we really, the, the intent of this application was to create an ADU. So we did some digging in the current UDC and in the comprehensive plan and decided to submit a minor site plan review to the town of Carbondale. The town of Carbondale interpreted that ADUs needed to be attached within the residential low density district. And so we looked at that code and determined that, you know, with an ADU application, it would require variances. Couple of those variances would be the ADU need to be located in front of the primary structure. The ADU can only contain one bedroom. And the maximum area for the ADU would be capped at 500 square feet, based on a 1,200 square foot home that is there currently. We also explored a couple of other options. If we partially demolished the existing single-family residence and converted it to an ADU, to meet the minimum square footage and construct a new single-family residence in the rear portion of the property, we can increase the existing single-family residence. Or we could completely demolish the existing residence that's on the property there now, build a new single-family residence and build a maximum ADU. And, and really, these are all irresponsible development and negative environmental impacts. So based on, you know, having to do variances and not meeting the code for an ADU for what we were desiring, we came up with a creative solution to do a lot split. So we did some research and back in May, we submitted a major plat amendment for the subdivision of this established lot. As John mentioned, back in June, we had our first P and Z hearing. In July, P and Z gave us six conditions of approval. Mainly it was creating a final plat with utility and access easement. We were continued in September due to some other circumstances at P and Z. And then last month, we went to planning and zoning and got a unanimous approval from the commissions or commissioners. So a little bit about the property. It's 520 Mesa Verde. You have Highway 133 here. We have the Rio Grande Trail and then A Street. This property is located within the residential low density district, but you'll notice that is adjacent to residential medium density on the opposite side of A Street. This red little area represents 520 Mesa Verde. So you'll see that three properties here adjacent to 520 Mesa Verde are higher density. We have 522 North A Street, which is a duplex. We have 516 Mesa Verde, which contains an ADU. We have 522 Mesa Verde Avenue, which is a multifamily maybe duplex, I'm sure. And then we have 512 North A Street, which also contains an ADU. So you'll see here, I mean, there's three properties that have joined 520 Mesa Verde. And three of those properties have multifamily. And there's another one on A Street that's also in the residential low density district that has an ADU. There's been a ton of neighborhood concern about, you know, if 520 Mesa Verde does a lot split, this is going to set a precedent for the neighborhood. You'll see here in this diagram that most of the lots are rectilinear nature and they're too small for a lot split per the UDC. A minimum lot area and residential low density is 6,000 square feet. The red lots represent lots that don't have a minimum lot area to do a lot split. The lots that are in the yellow are adjacent to the dog park. They have steep slopes and they're not feasible for a lot split. Then you have three lots here that 520 Mesa Verde is a star. These lots have enough area for a lot split, but both of them don't have existing access to the rear portion of the property and would cause a lot of development to that, those properties for a lot split and really aren't feasible. So you'll see here on the left, we have 520 Mesa Verde Avenue. We have an existing driveway that accesses an existing garage structure in the rear portion of the property. The single-family residence is in the front portion of the property. You can see that 516 Mesa Verde Avenue and 508 Mesa Verde Avenue do not have existing access to the rear portion of the property. I'd also like to note that 508 Mesa Verde Avenue has some steeper slopes on this corner that would probably cause difficulties for development on this property. So again, here is the existing survey. We have existing access via driveway with existing utilities that go to the main residence and also to a garage structure in the rear portion of the property. This proposed site plan represents that we've met all of the UDC residential low density district dimensional standards. The minimum lot area of 6,000 square feet, the minimum lot depth of 100 feet, the minimum lot width of 60 feet, front yard setbacks of 15 feet, side yard setbacks of seven and a half feet, and rear yard setbacks of seven and a half feet as well. Another concern that we, was brought up by the neighbors was parking. And you can see in this diagram that currently there would be two parking spots for the main residence in the front. There would be two additional parking spots for the proposed residence in the rear. And on this proposed residence is a two-car garage. So really, we would be parking six total vehicles on this property. Or two properties, excuse me. We've met the impervious lot coverage being less than the maximum of 52% for both lots. The density of this property is not going to change. We have a single-family residence in the front. Currently, there is a garage structure. The proposed residence would shift forward. It would have a garage on the main level. It would have a two-bed, two-bath on the upper level. And the density of this property, as far as buildings are concerned, would not change. So we wanted to make sure that this development was not going to be making any negative impact to the neighborhood. We reached out to a civil engineer to provide a utility impact letter stating that new services for sewer and water would be less than half a percent to the existing infrastructure. It was a concern by P and Z and we figured that would be best to reach out to an engineer, make sure we got the calculations done and figure out that the negative impact to the existing infrastructure is next to none. Another condition of approval was the easement agreement. This is the easement agreement between lot 10A and 10B for an access and utility easement to be utilized by lot 10B in the rear. You'll see here on this diagram that this utility easement is utilizing the existing driveway where existing utilities are coming up and serving both the main residence and the existing garage in the rear portion of the property. You see the utility access easement here. Here's the final amended plat. This shows the access easement on lot 10A to access lot 10B for both utilities and access. We also have a plat note that was requested that one single-family residence is to be permitted and constructed on both lot 10A and 10B. And that no accessory dwelling unit shall be permitted or constructed on either lot 10A or 10B. So again, the ultimate goal for this project was to build an ADU. We went through the initial planning process for that ADU. It required variances. And through the comprehensive plan and the UDC, we came up with a creative solution to provide more housing here in Carbondale. You can see that we've met all the conditions of approval. We provided a final amended plat and easement agreement. We will pay all the fees if we get approval. We provided additional documents and restrictions, one being the utility impact study and the other being the amended final plat note stating that no ADUs in the future could be constructed or permitted on either lot 10A or 10B. We've met all the UDC requirements as far as codes concerned, lot area, the width, the depth, the front, side and rear setbacks, building height, impervious lot coverage, off-street parking, no impact to existing infrastructure and no increase in density. We also received P and Z approval back in October unanimously. We also were given kudos and said the application was very thorough and that they thought this is a very creative solution to provide additional housing here in the town of Carbondale. And that is my last slide. Any questions?
Thank you, Ryan. Nicely done. Any questions of Ryan? Okay. Looks like you covered all the questions.
Great.
Okay. Any other questions of either Ryan or staff before we open it up to the public?
Another one for staff?
Sure.
So John, are there any? I mean, I remember when we were doing some of the ADU in Colorado Meadows, there was questions around the HOA and they allow. Was there any other conversation as to whether this is allowable under HOA docs? Do they require those approvals, that kind of thing?
There, there is not an active HOA. And if you may recall, the town's not really part of enforcing the covenants that's between the landowners themselves. So there really was, there was a small conversation, I should say, I actually clarify, with P and Z and it was the same thing, that we don't enforce covenants. The applicants, would you like to add anything to Ryan's presentation? I forgot. You don't have to, but. Okay. Do you mind coming over here and? Yeah, either Kevin or Lonnie or Mark need to share their mic. Oh, oh, you're going to stay at the podium. Okay.
Right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. On behalf of, my name is Damon Roth. This is my wife, Danielle Roth. Thanks to the Board of Trustees for your, for your time and consideration. About two years ago, Danielle and I Um, about two years ago, Danielle and I were standing in our backyard. Uh, the very uh behind the garage you can see there and we spend no time there. And we had recently had some friends that had to move out of town because they don't, they just don't have any housing. And so we, we started thinking like, look, we could really do something here to make an asset for the community. Um, so I started talking with Ryan and I'm sure, you know, he's mentioned the ADU solution. And we started looking at the lot split. I was like, this is, this is a great alternative and a creative way to provide more than. A starter home for a one person employee. This could be. A place for a home with a dog. You know, maybe a small family, uh, there's a backyard for it. So I said, this is just an amazing opportunity and let's, let's push forward with that. Uh Danielle and I are residents of this house for fifteen years. And not really planning going anywhere anytime soon. Cause even if we did sell it, where are we gonna go? We live in the greatest place as it is. Um, the uh, you know, discussions about. Uh, you know, we, we tried to incorporate some of the um. Issues that the neighbors were bringing up. Um, the ADU one was one. That we never even thought about. It was like, well, that would be a horrible solution or. Uh, for the neighborhood. Um, so we're glad to include that. Uh, we voluntarily uh included that as part of our um package and um. Yeah, that's about all I can add to that. So thank you for your consideration.
Thanks, Damon.
Appreciate it.
I got, I got a couple of questions for you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Do you intend to sell the lot or develop it?
Uh, we are going to build a two bedroom, two bath apartment above the garage.
Okay.
For the intent of long term rental.
Okay.
Um, we have experienced short term rental in the past on our property. We did have a small unit. That we did that for a little while. Uh, it was not a good experience. And you know, with a lot of the, you know, just. It's hitting home with some friends having to move out of town that, you know, this would be a great. Long term place. So we do intend to develop it for long term.
Okay.
Rentals.
Great. And we do plan to take up the issue of short term rentals and who knows what we'll do, but um. Yeah, we've seen impact from them. So I'm, I'm curious. So thanks for addressing that question as well. All right. Any other questions, Damon? Okay, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Okay. With that, uh, Ann, I'm not sure your name, but you're welcome to come speak and. Well, you don't have to. Oh, there's a gentleman behind you too. Okay.
Ron made it back from Hawaii in time.
Okay, and same rules apply. Three minutes is direct comments.
Can I interrupt? Hey, Ryan, could you stop sharing your screen?
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Okay.
Okay. Ann Crimmer, and I still live at five oh one Mesa Verde. I didn't move in the last hour. Um. I wanted to point out that this is uh actually the fifth meeting. One was canceled because they didn't have a quorum. Um, and the unanimous vote was only four members of the P and Z. Uh, one who on the previous meetings uh could not participate because he was a current employee of four and five. He was not anymore, so therefore he was allowed to participate in the final vote. Um, he did disclose, however, that he has personal friends with both uh Ryan and Damon. Uh, so that's where we're coming from as a neighborhood. Um. No one has come forward to say that they support this. I've talked to a lot of neighbors. Um, the timing is bad. It's a holiday week. But people have sent in letters over time. No one's opinion has changed as far as I am aware. Um, and uh, since I've seen the same presentation a couple of times, uh, but you haven't. Like to point out uh. That uh they have shown the surrounding lots multiple times now. Um, there's not a picture of my house. I live directly across the street. Um, it's a three bedroom house that two people have lived in for eighteen years. That'd be myself and my husband. Um, we never intend to have an ADU. We don't intend to make an ADU out of our existing house. Uh, we bought because it was a single family neighborhood. There are covenants. The covenants do not expire. Yes, there is no HOA, but the covenants are in perpetuity until. Fifty percent, I think it has to be fifty one percent of the landowners vote to get rid of the covenants. Um, so those still exist. Although there is not a funded HOA to fight for the covenants. Um, the houses that have been shown um in the slides. Uh, one was modified in the nineteen eighties. Um. That has always been an issue. Uh, the current owner did a ton of work, gutted the place. Um, she believes she's in compliance now. Um, there's only a couple of people living in the house. It used to be a zoo over there. Um, the new duplex um had a trailer that. Was unlivable for a very, very long time. I can't remember how many years. Um. That I believe they tried to do as an ADU. I, I don't, there was something weird about that one, John, and I don't remember. The one on the corner of uh Eighth and Morrison, the gray one.
That is a single family with an ADU, but it's not part of Carl Meadows either.
Yeah, it's not, it's not, um, it doesn't have the same covenants. It's not part of the subdivision. Um, but I recall there being something about that. I don't know if they originally wanted a duplex. Um, and then um on the corner of. The other corner of Eighth and Morrison, they've shown pictures of the very modern ADU. Um, when that one went in, I, I was the only person to go to the meeting. Okay, but nobody knew what an ADU was then. Um, and that as soon as they had a CO, went on Airbnb. Um, as far as infrastructure, the town has not done any input on that. There are fourteen lots in the neighborhood of sixty. Um, that are over twelve thousand square foot. There's at least one that is over eighteen thousand square foot, which technically could be split three ways. If they get creative enough. Um, also Giannetti subdivision, that's Eighth and Cowan. Most of those lots are lot, large enough to split. Um, so when you start changing the code. Through one approval, you've now opened up fourteen lots in my neighborhood. Another handful on Eighth, and I don't know how many community wide. Um, but it's a huge decision. Um, and the other thing is, you know, parking, I spoke with John about it. Um. You can see from the, the drawing that. That the parking, the parking area is. Over the property line when they show it stacked for the front. Um. Because it's an existing structure, it does not have to meet current U D C guidelines. Um, but there's no way they're gonna fit two cars there. Thank you.
Okay.
I appreciate you giving me the time.
Of course. Okay, is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to, yes sir? Please come forward, give us your name, where you're from, and you've got three minutes.
Can I have thirty seconds more? We haven't gotten to speak much in this thing. My name is Ron Barr. I live at five oh eight Mesa Verde Avenue. I've been watching this process for six months. And it's based on my observations and opinion. We've had limited verbal comments. Many of us have submitted letters, opposition to the lot split. But it was apparent from the get go that it's going to end up in front of you all here. There's access issues violated the code, adding subdivisions within subdivisions. Inconsistency with the town comprehensive plan, this application should have been denied immediately. You know, in two thousand thirteen, the town created the town comprehensive plan. To prioritize community objectives for the future. You fast forward. And you're in the midst of reviewing that plan right now and updating it. So. The plan had created the five hundred square foot ADUs. The purpose being to create additional long term housing, primarily for the working community. And today we do see that some parts of it aren't working, as you said, short term. Short term rentals are a bane. Now comes Damon and he. He was, he wants to split his lot. Or he wants to get a building permit. To build a larger ADU. Detached, which is not allowed. So it is, you can't get a building permit for that. So with this planner, this highly reputable planner who does a heck of a job. It works towards the making of a lot split, two lots, which should never happen. You know, we say, you said initially one person voiced opposition, but if you read the letters, you'll see there's more than one person in the area opposed to it. And the fourteen lots we talk about that only have one or two possibly that could build. On because of geographical constraints. Obviously, he's forgotten what an excavator can do, which can move. There are a lot of dirt, which can dig very deep. All it can do. If this one lot split is allowed, precedence is established. The gateway has opened. The fox is in the hen house. You can expect this avenue of requests to go on. Not just in Colorado Meadows subdivision, but throughout the community. My fear is that as property values continue to spiral upward. More and more developers will begin to start buying up residences and then begins the mantra. Scrape and split. Down come the houses, scrape and split. And if this is the future you want for the community, so be it. If not, it must be stopped now. You've had meetings, the community outreach programs, reviewing what is working, what is not working in the two thousand thirteen plans. So why? Is this proposal of a lot split even gotten this far? This certainly does not seem like the time to even consider something so drastic as the request for approval before you. So I ask you at this time to follow. The lead and initial recommendation of your planning staff. That said in the beginning of the process, this application should be denied. Thank you.
That was pretty good, Ron. Three, three minutes, forty seconds. Nice job. I wish I had that awareness. All right.
Hi. Hello, uh, I'm Eric Crimmer. I also live at five oh one Mesa Verde. And I will try to keep this short. I will echo, uh, I agree with everything that Ron has said, that my wife has said. I am in favor of growth, um, but I'm in favor of managed growth. And if we start doing all of these projects on a case by case. And bending the rules here and bending the rules here, then we lose our manageability of this whole process. Um, it was denied several times, three times, I believe, by P and Z staff. I understand P and Z approved it finally, but um it was denied and was denied for good reasons. Um, and as we have said. There's fourteen other lots. On that, that can be split. And as Ron has said, um, an excavator, the money that comes into this valley, I don't have the crystal ball that apparently the applicants have. To say that none of these other lots are feasible splits. In this day and age, I wouldn't have said that the lot that's in question was feasible for a split. Um, and we've already felt the impact of all the ADUs that we already have in our neighborhood. Uh, it has changed the dynamic of our neighborhood already. It's still a great neighborhood. Um, but it continues to change. And if you allow this to go through, then it's going to change at an even more drastic rate. So I, it like others before me, I hope that you take that into consideration. Uh, and don't approve this. The integrity of the neighborhood, I hope we can keep what's left of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, he was great. Yeah. Okay, um. Kevin, do you think anyone on there, Ben Z is here to speak? If, if you're on our Zoom call and you'd like to speak on this issue, please raise your Zoom hand. Okay. All right, that's everybody. So we will close, close the public comment period and bring it back to the board for deliberation. And what? Give me a second. Um, John listed uh in his memo. Uh, obviously all the issues and the criteria under which we can approve a final plat. There are conditions of approval, findings of approval. Uh, and preliminary plat criteria, and that's really what's meant to guide this decision.
What page is that, Dan?
Uh. Pages thirty and thirty one.
Okay, thank you.
Um. And I say that because um I think it's important to note that according to staff's. Memo and presentation, we're not bending the rules. Um, we're following them and we have. Um, with this criteria, we have the ability to uh interpret the comprehensive plan. And decide whether this uh meets the intent. Um, but I do believe we followed the process. Um, and it's been a thorough process. Um, so I just. Am offering that guidance to say. Um, to rebut the fact that we're bending any rules if this were to be approved, but also just to keep the um. You know, it's not a matter of just do we like it or do we not? We're looking at this criteria and these conditions is, um, do we agree or not agree? So. Um, any other comments, questions? Heather?
Uh, just two for John. If they were not to do the access via like an easement, but it had to be access. It would put the front. Building kind of in. You wouldn't be able to do that because you couldn't meet setbacks and use access wide enough to, you know. Have a, a lot in the back that was completely separate. Like if it was a flag lot. Where they had to own their access.
You'd essentially just have a, a lot out there with no access to it. And you can think of the uh, the lot on Eighth Street. That kind of went through the same process, but yet then actually chose to extend the lot out to Eighth Street to provide that access. In this case, if they didn't have that easement, it just made a lot with no access.
Yeah. Right. And then. Aside, let's say from owner, you know, landowner intention. The twelve hundred square feet that's on the lot in the back, right in like the proposed, what could actually be built there? How big? If they didn't, because I, I don't fully understand whether they're saying like demo the garage and, you know, put up twelve hundred square feet. And at this point, it doesn't necessarily matter. We're not approving a site plan. So it's just a subdivision. What could, how, how, like that could be a full size, twenty four hundred square foot house.
Right, as, as long as they met their impervious and their parking requirements for. This zone district for a site of that size, it'd be fifty two percent of the lot could be impervious. So as long as they set that or met that with their pervious, impervious ratios and their parking. I mean, we could break out a crystal ball and figure out how much they could, the build there, but.
Probably about that.
Probably.
That's it.
That's it. Okay.
Just a follow up on that.
On, um. The applicant um who shared with us there showed us a plat note and a plat, but. Are we, so we're approving a plat. That has some restrictions on it.
Right.
That they've sort of self imposed, but does that include a square footage restriction or a? I'm just getting a little confused because sometimes the site plan comes with an application like this, you're saying this doesn't, but we've seen things that are kind of like a site plan.
Right, and this, this is not a site plan review. This is strictly final plat, just to subdivide the lot.
Okay.
So we're not a, actually looking at, you know, the type of structure that, that could be there or what they've represented on there that could be there. Is, we don't know what's going to come in for building permits. This is not a site plan review.
Okay. So that's just good to keep in mind that what, what comes in for building permit would have to conform to residential low density.
Correct.
Zone. Um, but it wouldn't have to be exactly what was presented tonight. Right. Marty. Good catch.
Uh, yeah, so if the lot is split, you have two separate lots. And conceivably they could be sold separately. Is that correct? Okay.
Okay. Well, uh. There's no further questions, no further deliberation. Um. Jeff?
If you're inclined to approve this.
there is one thing that I would change on this plat. I would change the setbacks along that easement to match the easement line and not extend into it. Because although the home that's there now is not encroaching in that easement, if you allow the setbacks to encroach in that easement, you could build up to those in the future. So I would make the setback lines match the edge of the easement, if that makes sense.
Makes the existing home non-conforming, you mean?
Well, might, but if you don't do that in the future, that could be built up to that setback line.
Which would compromise the easement. Yeah. John, what does that mean for it to? I mean, I, I know generally, but the fact that we would be pushing something into non-compliance, does that mean in practical terms?
So if it was to become non-compliant, it just basically means they couldn't expand on that structure with the non-conformity?
So anywhere, even on the opposite side of the house?
On the opposite side, you, you could, but you couldn't expand on that non-conformity on that side. Right?
Okay.
Again, I didn't mean to complicate the process. That just jumped out at me. And I think if you're inclined to approve this, it would be better to create a current non-conformity versus create a problem down the road for somebody else to deal with, with somebody building into that easement.
Okay. Mark?
Easements and setbacks aren't necessarily incompatible. They only become so if you build an improvement on top of the easement that would block its use for whatever it's supposed to be used for. I have not studied the easement agreement here, but if it was clear that there would be no, no improvements placed on or under the easement, whether or not it's within the setback area, I think that might take care of it and make sure that the easement holders' rights trump the rights of the front house to expand into the easement. You also obviously could adjust the setback, but to put a house into non-conforming status, you know, if that's agreeable to the applicant, it can be done. But that's a significant, you know, change.
Okay.
May I say something about that?
Uh, no, I'm sorry, Ryan, we've closed the public comment period, or, and I know you're part of the applicant, but yeah, I think we're comfortable with that response unless anybody has needs clarity.
Or, or even a plat, I don't mean to keep, I'm sorry, Dan, but a plat note, it could say the same thing. It says there shall be no construction in the, the easement shall remain unobstructed and.
Okay, Ryan, I'm, I'm thinking through this and it may require consideration. So go ahead and comment.
Yeah, the easement that we're proposing, as far as that driveway access would not create an existing non-conformity. So that easement would not encroach into the house. We could do a twelve-foot easement and also be a twelve-foot setback. If it's my understanding that easement becomes a setback, so that twelve-foot setback, the house is probably three or four feet from that, just to let you know.
Okay. All right. So what I'm hearing is a few different ways to solve this if decide to proceed.
Yeah, that, I'm a little lost on that point. I don't think it's the threshold question, but whether we add some detail to the plat or the easement, like legal documentation in here seems pretty important and just exactly what the simplest.
I think his point was that doing what I suggested would not create a non-conformity. Is that correct, Ryan?
That's not what I heard.
Yeah, you got it.
Because if the, the house doesn't extend into the easement right now, so if you just make the setback line the edge of the easement, it's still conforming, right?
Correct. Thank you.
You don't mean measure the setback from the edge of the easement?
No, I just mean, just like this setback line is drawn on here now in the easement, you just move that line to there and you can build up to that line.
So set a unique setback just for that lot that has nothing to do with single-family or low-density zoning setback.
It reinforces that the easement trumps code setback.
Okay. I mean, I can live with any of these solutions. I just don't know exactly what, where to put it and exactly what to say, because if we make a motion, we have to include that so that it's just abundantly clear.
Yeah. And, and you know, let's, I'm not hearing anyone jump forward with comments and I have a few just closing comments, but does anybody have concerns?
Huge. Yeah, I mean, yeah. I'm struggling a little bit with the process. You know, just sort of where and when and the complexion of the P and Z that was kind of able to review this. I'm nervous about having our public meeting tonight. You know, I, I feel like at least kind of a continuance tonight, just to ensure that we can hear additional public comment in front of us and not just written comment into the P and Z. And then, you know, in, in terms of compliance with the comprehensive plan and, and even what Ryan read us, this is not an ADU. It is very specifically not an ADU. And I really appreciate intent of the landowner and what they're trying to do and that it feels like the intent is the same. Well, here's a way to get to it and this is what we want to do with the long-term rental. But, you know, either four houses down or the neighborhood on the other side of town, you know, can start kind of looking at the same approach with a very different intent. And, and I think zoning is meant to have certain sureties to that existing zoning. And so the ADU is a specific mechanism that like applies to a particular zoning and lot split is just significantly different. And so I'm really struggling with like the, the can, what we're supposed to be looking to approve and what came out of P and Z, right? We're not supposed to look at the compliance with, with, or concurrence with the comprehensive plan. But it was part of the presentation tonight. And so making a response to that, I just, these are two significantly different things in every legal way, in every management way. And so personally, I'm not ready to vote tonight, you know, if, if pushed to it, I, you know, applicant probably wouldn't like my vote.
So Heather, how do you reconcile in the criteria that the development substantially complies with all requirements of the code?
Because it does. And that's really what I'm struggling with, right? We're not really supposed to look at the preliminary plat questions around whether it complied with a comprehensive plan. And, and so I'm definitely wrestling with that part because I was a part of those changes to the UDC and this was not what we intended. And that's always a challenge for the new code as you put it in place and live with its implications.
And the way I'm hearing you, you, you think that it doesn't meet the intent of the UDC because it's, it's not a small attached ADU on the back or front of a house. It's a, it's two houses.
Yeah. And so that, that, the part, the, the piece that was read, right? The idea with the ADU is that they were intended to be a different size. It was here is a main unit and you're actually adding on this accessory that is meant for an entry level, a, you know, a smaller size, like it is intended to on that lot create some of that mix where it's, it's not, you know, same density. This ends up with a two thousand square foot home on it and, you know, a whole family and three cars and, you know, and so that idea of an ADU was inherent to adding it as an accessory. It was a smaller unit. Right there you had the mix, not a lot split where you can effectively just duplicate the density, duplicate the use, you know, in what was intended to be low-density zoning. So I think that's how it's like, it's, there's a pretty critical difference between trying to find a way to add an ADU, right? I, I feel like variances to an ADU where that was the key intent of, of the comprehensive plan versus finding a way around things, the lot split feels really, again, like it, it's just finding a way around the intent to do the same thing. And that's what I appreciate about this particular applicant and again, their intent. But when you look at what the comprehensive plan was trying to do and then how we were trying to kind of massage that into the UDC, this, this, this would not be something we would want to duplicate throughout low-density neighborhoods and anyone that could manage to find the same square footage on their lot.
So what about, I love this dialogue. Thank you. So one of the things that for me made the, makes the density more acceptable is that you do have access, you do have a building. And so for you, I, what I'm hearing is it's not so much the lot split. It's now you're adding another house as opposed to a small ADU, even though it's, it would be detached. But if they built, if they, if they built a small house that was the size of an ADU, does that alleviate the concern or is it, no, it's still a separate dwelling, separate lot and that doesn't feel right?
I mean, I guess if you were trying to say you're going to condition the plat even further and then say the only thing they can build on it is five hundred square feet. I mean, sure, I guess maybe, you know, there's still kind of this fine line of the precedent that we're setting that someone doesn't even own their access. Or I mean, they, like, it's this complication of an easement. It's, they, there is no frontage on any road, whether alley or primary road. Like there's still some of these things that, you know, feel like they're, it's just trying to find a way around things, right? Versus one owner, when you have an ADU, it's one owner of a lot, sort of full control of that lot.
Okay. And I'm not necessarily suggesting that. I'm just trying to get at sort of the core of the, the negative impact, if you will, so.
Yeah, there's, yeah, I think it's everything from that intent of what an ADU is supposed to do to just this overall precedent issue for me, certainly.
Okay. John, let me ask a question on that. Is what Heather's describing, would you argue that, well, does Heather speak staff's mind with the original recommendation of denial, do you think?
With the compliance with the comprehensive plan, I think we're, we're on the same page, especially with the established neighborhood's designation in the flume on this neighborhood itself. And then with a nod towards the original subdivision agreements for sixty-platted lots and an approved density that happened, you know, nineteen seventy-five is when this was originally platted. For that, I, I think we're, we're on the same page. The ADU question, we could, you know, wrangle with on whether or not they could do a, a certain size that's just all in, in the UDC itself. And originally they did come in with a proposal for an ADU that was not in compliance. It was larger than what was allowed. And then for the comments on variances, it'd be a hard push to even be able to prove that you have a hardship for a variance to be approved because you're, you're coming in on a lot you know. You've owned for a long time and you know what the requirements are, the space requirements, but you're going to claim a hardship on wanting to build a larger ADU. And at that time staff wasn't supportive. So there are some, some things that we're definitely in, in agreement on, so.
Okay. Well, Heather shared her thoughts. Does anybody? And I'm, I'm hearing her recommend a, a recommendation to continue. Ben, are you raising your hand?
Yeah. Thanks, Heather. Our dialogue always helps all of us, but on this one, I think we disagree. You know, the fact that it's a big enough lot to split and still have two low-density lots, that is the biggest thing in my mind. If it was that the lot split would then change the zoning and this would have to be medium density or high density or something like that, I'd see it totally differently. But it's not changing the zoning. It's not changing the code. It's not asking for any variance. There's, I think going to be no discernible difference in the impact to that neighborhood, whether there's a small ADU back there or a, a, a house as far as number of people and cars and traffic and all that. It's a low-density neighborhood. It doesn't seem to have too many of those problems right now, although I know some of the neighbors would differ on that every ADU that goes in. And I think, you know, we're just at a, a point in our town where we're crying out for more housing and we're looking for creative solutions. And I think that this is a creative solution. I think that the alternative of a, a small ADU that they own and that's, yeah, maybe more likely to be short-term rental and that sort of thing versus this. I think that it's a really good solution and the fact that it just doesn't require any variances, exceptions, revisions, code changes, any of that, just a simple lot split and that they can meet all the criteria. I don't feel like that's suddenly going to unleash a wave of this kind of development around town. I, you know, I haven't done a survey of every low-density neighborhood and how many lots could potentially be split. But I just don't see that as, as what's coming after this. So I'm not too concerned about a precedent. And I support the application.
Thanks, Ben. Marty?
Well, I am concerned about precedent. Because whenever we seem to make an exception or set a new precedent, it seems like a month or two later, someone else wants to follow in those footsteps. I'd be very comfortable continuing this, getting more input from neighbors. I'd be comfortable with the variance on an ADU. You know, separating one lot into two where they each could be sold individually is a lot different than the ADU. We have one person who owns the lot, is responsible for it. They want to sell it, they sell it, fine. And I'm just, I understand the intent of the UDC. I thought we got a great presentation. I know the owners. I know, I honor their intent. I don't think they're trying to pull a fast one. But that isn't to say that it creates a precedent that it's not beneficial to town in the long run.
Just to speak to the precedent issue, and I, I don't have a lot of thoughts on this. I certainly appreciate the comments from all the neighbors. And I, I think most of them are very thoughtful. I guess I'll also comment on the, on a continuance. While the timing is unfortunate that it's, you know, the night before a holiday break, I think there's been ample time for neighbors to comment and I don't necessarily think we'll learn new information if we continued it. So that's why I don't, I don't feel a continuance is necessarily needed. And regarding a precedent, I think our process has been overhauled in order to protect against precedents, changing things in many different ways. I think this process allows us to look at it and say, okay, does it meet all of the requirements of the code? And do we agree with that? And to me, when, so, so if it just checked all the boxes, I, I don't think it's necessarily required of us to say yes. But when I look at it and I think of the impacts, as Ben mentioned, you know, there is, there's privacy between the neighbor. There's already a building there. There's already access. And as Ben said, we are looking for creative places to put housing. It doesn't mean it's without impacts and this is by no means a no-brainer for me. But to me, I, I think, I think it makes sense. So. Erica?
A couple of things. I think when we look at our old neighborhoods that were platted forty-five years ago, I'm not going to do the math, nineteen seventy-five. I mean, Eighth Street wasn't even a paved road at that time. We were making neighborhoods that we, you know, those developers were hoping people would live in someday, like our population was tiny. And so I do think that this, whoever decided that this particular lot is going to be fourteen thousand plus square feet and it works now to split it in the way it was set up. We are now a community. Um, we are now a community that a seven thousand square foot lot can make sense and I, so I think this one can make sense. I like the idea more than an A D U of a small home um, that could be a single family home, that could be sold to whoever. We don't have that many, we have a lot of rentals in town being built and we've been told that, we don't have a lot of small homes being built or added to our stock. Uh, to get a first time home buyer in, albeit our pricing is not going to be a first time home buyer right now potentially, so. Um, that gets me, it makes, it, it seems like that would be a better fit for this lot and for that neighborhood would be a second small home. I don't know if I'd be, I think a variance for an A D U would be really tough to, um, like John said, look at the hardship. How would this look? I think the neighbors would see another big uh change in a home and an A D U. Um, like Anne said, for her neighbors right next door, that people were kind of caught off guard by. This seems, um, even though we don't agree on this part, this seems like it would be a lower impact to the neighborhood. And I think it's uh, one of those creative ways, I look at my neighborhood, which is over in Crystal Village, another old one in the seventies. And um, I would be thrilled if we could get a little bit more, few more homes in our awesome neighborhood. We have, um, I think uh, some homes are set right in the middle and there's not that opportunity unless you're gonna go scrape it, which is a whole, a whole nother ballgame, so. Um, I would be supportive of this happening uh in my neighborhood, um, and I think uh, it's a great way to add one more small home. So that's where I'm landing tonight.
Thank you Erica.
Yep.
No pressure Luis and Lonnie.
No.
But uh, as you're gonna have to speak at one point, whether by vote or by comments, so.
I'll, I'll go first, um. I can completely see both sides of the nation, this is a tough one, because I, I, I agree with Ben and Dan in terms of. The creative and I think back to that, um, and it wasn't a subdivision, I think that's where I get caught up in this. Um, when we approved the one on Cleveland Avenue right there, tucked in, um, next to the Rio Grande. But I, I do think it, it does raise a concern in terms of, you know, i- it does this create a trend in, in moving forward and, and do we then? Start to have to deal with a whole nother set of issues as we look at neighborhood by neighborhood. Um, I appreciate the, the intent of, of the owner, um, of the applicant in terms of trying to create more housing. But I do have concerns and I put myself in the shoes of, if I were in that neighborhood, what, what would I be thinking? What would I, you know, uh, consider is appropriate? Um, so, so this is a tough one, um, I agree with Dan that I don't think we're gonna get any more info if we bring it back for a continuance, so. Um, yeah, I mean, it's, I'm not gonna say how I'm gonna vote.
Okay. Um, we're wrapping up, so Lonnie, any thoughts?
Um, yeah, I mean, I'm looking at this from the lot split perspective and um, also, you know, we've heard a number of these similar scenarios. Over the last few years, including the one that um, Luis just highlighted again, and there's always pushback from the neighborhood, right? Um, we get it in my neighborhood as well. Um, I don't think this one appears to be as impactful as the other one that we heard earlier this year. Um, and I, I really don't see anything all that objectional about it. I understand that the precedent setting for anything is always um concerning. However, uh, you know, I rely on the character of the Carbondale community um, to value um their properties. And I, I really don't expect a big ground swell of folks wanting to do something similar for the purpose of personal gain. I think, um, you know, the value of the community is in the lot that they own. Um, and how they valued it and uh maintained it and I. Don't really anticipate that there's going to be a big push to raise. Um, a number of homes to do the lot split, first of all, you know, the finances would be difficult. Um, the process would be difficult and I think people are generally speaking um, comfortable with what they have. So that's kind of where I fall on this and um. You know, as, as a point of a lot split, I, I would consider it. Right there.
Thanks Lonnie, Ben?
Um, I mean, I'm ready to make a motion, my only question is just, um, what I brought up at the beginning about the. Applicant has stated that the intent is for long-term local workforce housing and I wonder if they would entertain, and we've never done that before, but some sort of plat note about it's. Not for short term rentals, there are other properties in town that have that, the Colorado Place over here by True Nature. Um, three story building there, all the owners in there are limited, they can't do. Short term rentals and that was because the developer offered that right from the start, because otherwise he could see that that would turn into a little mini hotel. Um. And you know, if that's one of the main concerns, um, I wonder if that would help alleviate those concerns.
Um, so with that out, it's a question of the applicant, so uh Damon, do you want to speak on that behalf, whether you'd entertain that condition? And, and I guess I'll first ask Mark, are we within bounds to request such a thing?
Yeah, partic- I think particularly if the applicant's willing to um volunteer it, so to speak, but uh, the key would be if you're going to go down that path. And, and would be to define what is a short term rental, because our code doesn't do that.
Will it be less than thirty days, that's how it is on at least this building, I know. I know that, because my parents.
Okay. Damon, we, in, you can decline um to respond, but, but e- either way, will you, will you speak in the microphone? Thank you. And I misspoke earlier when I didn't let Ryan speak because he's the applicant, this is not public comment, this is part of, yeah, so.
Yeah, I mean, Daniel was whispering in my ear, I mean, we would certainly entertain that. Um, like you had mentioned, you know, what is short term rental, I mean, you were saying thirty days. Uh, you know, is it one year, are we able to do? You know, if it's, if we're doing seasonal rentals to people that are here for the season, you know, uh, working at the ski area. Or in other capacities, you know, how's that defined? Um, but yeah, I think that would be something we'd be going to entertain, but if, what is, what is the? Definition of short term, I'm not trying to poke holes through it, but.
Sure, it's okay, I mean, what I'm suggesting is what I know exists on some other properties in town, which is um rental for less than thirty days.
Hmm.
Would be prohibited, a really simple note like that on the plat, and then that would go with the plat, I mean, that'd be whether you're the owner or somebody else is the owner, that'd be a restriction. Um, a permanent restriction on that, consistent with how it's being represented here.
Yeah, I don't really. We don't really want people like coming and going all day, every day uh in, in our backyard.
Yeah, just go ahead and state your name too and respond.
Hi, Danielle Roth, thank you, um. The goal of this is to be able to provide housing for people that I know that need to live in this valley, I've worked here in this valley for twenty-three years and I've always had housing problems. I want to be able to rent to my friends or to somebody that I know that's gonna stay there, I don't want people back and forth all the time. I don't want to be having to change over the place or anything like that, I want, you know, a family, couple, a dog, preferably a cat.
Okay.
You know, that can stay there and that, that they're gonna live there like we've made our lives here, I mean. I moved here twenty-three years ago and I've always had housing problems and I'm watching all of our friends' houses have, have, have housing problems and leave the valley.
Both in agreement that we would be willing to entertain that, that type of a note.
Okay.
Yeah.
And just, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Um, and there is significant pressure for the community for us to address short term rentals community wide, so.
Yeah, and I think we're, we're gonna do that, um, but I think that the, the bind that we find ourselves in on things like this is. When the intent is really clear right now and then when the outcome doesn't match that intent at some point down the line. And that's not because anybody's misrepresenting something at this moment, but because things change and so this gives us some assurance. Um, so, are we ready for a motion?
Can I add one more thing?
Can I ask you a question and you can respond and, so. Um, both you and Marty talked about needing more public comment, I, I wouldn't, if you feel really, really important, I, I would consider that differently than other than just, that's. I mean, how important is it to you that there's more public comment?
Well, I probably agree with everything that's been said, I, I mean, I don't know that we'd hear anything new, but I think it would. I think that we're probably not hearing from some people that would come and speak to us directly, I, I don't think we hear anything new.
Okay, right, go for it.
Uh, could we just, should this move forward, I think it would be great to have Mark review the access easement agreement. I mean, this is the last time you see this, this gets effectively recorded, so I don't know if that's just standard practice or whether like we have to say, hey, let's make sure that that's.
Bring back an ordinance, right? So we can bring it back with the approvals.
Mark, do you have a preference whether um, we move the setback line or strengthen the easement language?
Um, I, it sounds to me like I misunderstood Kevin's initial comment and that they're not mutually incompatible. Um, so, I, I think we want to check it, but, but I think if, if the house is sixteen feet away and we've got twelve feet of easement, that there's no. Obvious non-conformity created by.
Okay.
Um, saying there's an easement here and the setback uh, that nobody can build closer than twelve feet from the lot line, even though the side setback and R L D is five, is that right? So, so, yeah.
Okay.
Um, basically another plat note probably reflected, the ordinance would probably say the plat will have the following plat notes, there may or may not be a short term provision, depending on where we land on that issue. But yes, we can bring that back, put it on consent, if you guys would like to talk about it more, you can pull it off, but if you close the public hearing. You wouldn't be able to have additional public comment, so you'd want to keep that open or reopen it and continue to date certain if you want to make that happen.
And Heather, what's your intent of talking about the easement again, if, if we just move the setback?
I don't want to talk about it again, I just wanted Mark.
Oh, okay.
Just to make sure it was pretty airtight, right, you're setting up something like Kevin's saying that that lot in the back gets bought, whatever, you know. It's, it's in the applicant's best interest to make sure that that's pretty airtight.
I think we're just saying the side setback on that side of the front house is twelve instead of seven and a half and that, that answers it, basically.
Was there nobody else?
There's a little curve on the end of it, that's why I suggested following the line.
Okay. Um, well Ben, I heard you say you were ready to make a motion.
Yeah, so I'll move to um, approve the final plat with the conditions and findings indicated uh in the packet. Um, with the additional um. Conditions for a plat note to be added to prohibit rental um, on the new lot of less than thirty days. And a note to clarify, subject to our attorney's language, um, that the side setback uh. Essentially shall be no less than the access easement um, for the existing lot. And, and direct staff to bring back approval documents for the board's consideration.
Does that language work for you, Mark?
It does, just to be clear, the, you know, directing us to bring back a setup documents, in my view, doesn't um constrain you all to voting the same way you're voting right now. That the actual final decision will be made at that point of having those actual documents ahead of you, in front of you.
Is that clear for everybody, I mean, essentially we're voting on it, but. Mark says we can reserve the right to change our vote if we'd like.
Well, we don't have, you can't take action on ordinance that's not written or stuck on that bulletin board out there, so the vote needs to be at the future meeting, not tonight.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. Final comments. All right, uh, Kathy, would you roll call votes?
Erica Sparhawk?
Yes.
Ben Baumfach?
Yes.
Monty Kitching?
Hi.
Dan Richardson?
Yes.
Heather Henry?
No.
Marty Silverstein?
No.
Louise Yanez?
No.
Okay, motion passes, so we will look to see an ordinance and. Next time, thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you.
The, the public hearing's closed, right? Public hearing is now.
Yeah.
Close the public hearing. Um. Makes sense to take a break, I just want to, again, just thank the board for pretty good deliberation and. We have some pretty intelligent, thoughtful people on here to ask good questions and I, I uh, just appreciate it. John, thank you for bringing forward a thorough uh packet.
It's been an entertaining one.
I bet. You calling?
Thank you, guys.
I'm glad we keep you entertained, John.
All right, let's take a five minute break and come back at seven thirty-seven.
Exactly.
That's a healthy one.
It's okay.
Some boards that be.
Eager to get to some future agenda items.
I'll text and we'll see if he gets back to me.
Oh my God. How did you?
He said you just a bite there. Yeah.
Oh, I was laid out, yeah, hundred and three degrees. No, because I know, that's why I haven't had it. You know.
Yeah, I try like to put it.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you, gift for me, just what I wanted.
I'm still being cordial.
Time's running out though, isn't it?
I think they think.
I warmed it up for you.
Thank you.
Sorry.
No, you're right, no, I should have been more subtle.
I mean, if you do plan.
What is it, I don't know. No, I got it on uh, email.
Okay.
Yeah, because it's um. Oh, thank you.
Kevin, I did have one, it was right here though.
So I did. How would you know what I did?
You know, I wish I looked. So Renee's got her, her Zoom running.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let's just jump on it and keep an eye out.
Just be sure in case they're watching on YouTube and.
Yeah.
Then they have fun.
How many of these did you have?
Huh? I think I made maybe ten of them, nine or ten, I figured they all, I can go make more.
No, it's fine. You don't need one of these, I have one, thank you.
Wow. It's really confusing. I gotta, I have a lot of questions on that. Really, where you? Huh?
No, no, you were, you were uh.
Yeah, you said you closed the public comment portion.
No, I would.
You had to measure it.
I was just saying, don't build on the driveway.
Right, which I was saying too.
Yep.
Yeah, it is goofy.
Okay, let's do that then, so. Yeah, One Man Shop is working with um. No, what? Quinn, um, Colin?
He's, he's.
I asked him to go on Zoom because I wanted him to watch up. And we invited him to the meeting and he don't find his name, so he was just gonna sit on. I would have, I would have.
So.
I left.
Been the Jason Simmons.
Frodenobik.
Bring the meeting back to order and couple changes. Uh, first is I neglected to ask for a motion to close the public hearing. So would Ben.
Uh, I I moved that we close the public hearing for the five twenty Mesa Verde final plat application.
Second.
Motion by Ben, seconded by Luis. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Post say no. Thanks, Kathy, for catching that. The other changes are, it was noticed in the agenda posted yesterday, uh, which I don't have in front of me, so is our next.
I've got it now, yeah.
Okay. Uh, is the town manager contract. Um, so for the viewing public, we interviewed our town managers, uh, the three finalists last week. Uh, we entered into an executive session and deliberated, and I believe we have a contract that is acceptable by both parties. Mark, we confirm, we don't have a um, our our finalist, Lauren Gister, has not signed this yet, but she's agreed to all the terms.
But you. We have been in communication. She has reviewed the draft contract that's in front of you. It's my understanding that she is agreeable to it. Just one clarification is that you guys, we can, we can only take action on this, whether it's signed or not, in open session. So um, we need to, um, you know, vet that at least briefly tonight and 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 take action based on that.
I believe all of you have had a chance to review the draft uh contract. We have a final contract in front. So anyone who'd like more time to read, read it. Okay. Anything else other than to motion to approve the contract? Unless you want me to summarize the key terms, which I'd be happy to do. That's up to you. You're welcome to do so.
Okay, um, so the the contract that we've we've been negotiating um with Lauren is a two year agreement. She, her first day of work would not be until January seventeen of twenty twenty-two. So the two year employment term would run from then until January sixteen of twenty twenty-four. There is a contingency for the town to complete customary uh background and reference checks before the contract would become effective. That would be between now and December eighth. There, I'm just going to hit the high points. We, I already mentioned the term. The provisions include if if either side would like to discontinue the relationship, there's a thirty days uh notice requirement on the town side i- if it's at will, meaning it's just a choice to discontinue. Whereas uh on the employee side, it's a sixty day, which is what you just went through with Jay. We had sixty days to get the search going before he left, so that's consistent with what we've done in the past. The uh salary is a hundred and eighty thousand dollars per year. There is a housing component in the contract which provides for uh Lauren to have an opportunity to rent the Gateway RV Park House um at a rent of sixteen hundred dollars per month. Alternatively, um, if she should choose, she may elect to reside elsewhere, albeit there is a local residency requirement with a stipend for housing of up to two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars per month. The uh retirement contribution uh by the town would be five percent of base salary, exclusive of any uh additional pay for, for instance, the housing stipend. There is a opportunity for moving expense reimbursement of up to ten thousand dollars based on what actually incurred. And we beefed up the uh training section a little bit in terms of providing a little more opportunity for training, given that she's moving here from Connecticut without experience in or in organizations like CML and the Colorado City Managers Association. Um, and there's discretion for the board upon request to grant more than five days of training annually. But if if there was a desire to do more than five, you guys would discuss it and decide whether that um was okay with you or not. And the rest of it is uh reasonably standard and consistent. We'll down with, done with other prior town managers, so.
Thanks, Mark.
You bet.
Thank you for the summary and for all the work that went into this. Um, and I will just say that I am very excited. I think for the general public, uh, we looked at many candidates. We looked closely at more finalists than we were expecting to. I think we got great feedback from staff who toured the facilities with all of our candidates. We had um probably uh at least a dozen, if not twenty, different community members participate in an interview panel. And of course, we had thorough interviews. And I feel really confident and felt really good after going into this second um uh interview session. Uh, I think Lauren has been already just wonderful to work with. Her resume speaks for herself with, I believe, over twenty years' experience in the Marines. Uh, she's been the first select woman in Chester, Connecticut uh for over six years. And for those of you like me who didn't know what a first select woman is, uh, it's basically a combination of a town manager and a mayor. So she has great leadership experience. She's a practicing attorney. Uh, she feels at home out here in the West, and her current community is very, very similar to Carbondale. So I think it's just been a a great process and with great enthusiasm, I will support um this contract and this hire, so. Any other thoughts to share?
Okay, we're. Don't worry, I'm excited, too.
Would anyone like to make a motion? Heather?
I would move to approve uh the contract with Lauren Gister.
I say Heather just because she's from Connecticut, so.
I know, I know.
Motion by Erica, seconded by Heather. All those in favor say aye. 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 Post say no. Motion passes.
I don't mean no.
Give me two seconds, I'm going to do a ceremonial recycling of the names.
The names of all the applicants.
No, the the committees.
The committees.
All right. Oh, geez, where am I? Okay, now we are back to our regular agenda, um, behind schedule, but still eager to hear an update on the comprehensive plan. Thanks for joining us, Janet.
Sure, thank you for having me. Um, I'm gonna, I I know you guys are really good at reading the staff reports and the information I include in there, but I'm going to go into a little bit of detail um for the public and, you know, maybe people aren't all that familiar with it. So forgive me if I'm going through stuff I know you've read, but um I think it'll be well worth just a little bit of time. Um, I I won't take a ton. So basically, little background, uh, in twenty twenty, the town board and the planning commission decided to do an update to the twenty thirteen comprehensive plan because there had been so many changes in the community over the last eight years. You know, a lot of developments, a lot of plans adopted. We itemized those, and I think we were all surprised. You know, the climate action plan being updated, the Ebor Environmental Bill of Rights, you know, that we did. You know, so because of all the changes in the last eight years, um, the decision was to do the update. And so in January of twenty twenty-one, the board and the planning commission discussed six target areas that needed a deeper look. And that included downtown, downtown north, um, high density, which is more compatibility of our existing high density zone district with adjacent neighbors. And making sure that that any new development's compatible. There, that one's never been really clear to people. Climate Action Plan and Sustainability, uh, Multimodal and Aging in Community. And so the update to the comprehensive plan is is that it's an update. And that update acts as a supplemental document to the twenty thirteen comprehensive plan. So when you're looking at subdivisions, you know, you'll be looking at the the twenty thirteen comp plan and then the update as a supplemental document. But what the supplement will have is the deeper dive into the six target areas. And it'll include the updated growth trends and demographics and have a future updated land use map or a future land use map that's been updated. For example, you know, you'll see we're incorporating the Red Hill uh property that the town just took ownership of and a few other changes. And then also provide an updated implementation matrix. Uh, you're all familiar with the implementation matrix in the twenty thirteen plan. We went through that and we checked off everything that was done. And it was pretty impressive, the amount of work that was done in the last eight years from the highway improvements. You know, a lot of them were code changes, you know, simplifying how ADUs were done to becoming a creative district. You know, I hope that they keep that document so you can see, you know, that a lot of it was checked off. So we'll have an updated implementation matrix to help with decision making in coming years. And the other thing is, um, the update was intended to incorporate all those plans and policies that um the towns adopted in the last eight years. And I sent you the list of all of those. So um you can see it was pretty inclusive. I also, in addition to sending Cushing Terrell the list, I sent them all the ducks. And uh, so they got plenty. So to begin the process earlier this year, a request for proposal was sent out. Cushing Terrell, or CT, we call him, was selected. And so I've been wo- working with Cushing Terrell. And then in addition, the town's communication consultant, which is PR Studio, has been an integral uh member of the group. And so PR Studio was the consultant the town brought on to the town or brought on as a consultant to help hu- general communication with the town. And as part of that effort, the town purchased the Bang the Table website, which is an interactive website. It's really cool. It's been a learning curve, um, but it has a lot of tools on there you can use uh for people to post things, pin things on maps, have conversations. And so that, we just started that. And uh, and then PR Studio developed the Bang the Table platform into what's called Kaleidoscope, which is the townwide community platform. And the comp plan effort itself was branded Chart Carbondale. And the Chart Carbondale webpage is part of the overall Kaleidoscope page. Because I was hearing a lot of people, including myself, had a lot of hard times on how to spell Kaleidoscope. You can find Chart Carbondale right on the town's website, front and center, if you're ever looking for it. So the planning commission has been acting as the project steering committee. And that's because the Unified Development Code direct staff or directs the planning commission to provide recommendations to the town board. If this were a full rewrite of the uh comp plan, then there would most likely be a working group pulled together like we did for the twenty thirteen because this was a very targeted, small update. The planning commission's been functioning as the steering committee. So there's been six meetings with, um, I'm just going to call them planning commission for this uh meeting. There've been six meetings with CT and the planning commission since June. And, you know, every month, it was basically monthly, they would have different topics. You know, they'd cover the draft engagement plan, um, draft vision and goals, uh, demographics and housing. You guys are going to really like that, the growth and trends. The downtown, downtown north, um, the targeted areas, mobility and access, aging in community, climate action plan. And then, starting in September, um, CT started drafting the draft uh plan framework and goals. And very general uh initial recommendations based on feedback they were hearing from the community events, which I'll go through in a minute. And so the last me- meeting that P and Z had with CT was actually last week where they were reviewing the implementation matrix. So while CT was going to P and Z over the summer, there were a number of events taking place. And um, it started off with the kickoff on the first Friday um in July, and uh that was fun. And that was to generate awareness of the project. And we started the Chart Carbondale website in July in conjunction with that. And we also opened that survey uh from July second that ran through August sixth. That was an online survey um on Bang the Table. You can translate it so you could do it in English or Spanish. Uh, we did have um paper copies of the survey available. Lessons learned, I should have had that in Spanish, the paper copies. So even though it was on the website in English, um, there were a lot of lessons learned in this process. And also to have typed bigger, so all members of the community can can read it. We got about five hundred and twenty-four responses to the survey between paper and online. So it was a fairly robust um response. Uh, so then in August, we did two community meetings. One was Adon, and that was the Spanish speaking um meeting. And that one was, we had never done this before, um, but it was a full-on Spanish-speaking meeting. And the way we did that is CT, PR Studio, um, and I worked with Valley Settlement and selected. Valley Settlement did this, got community leaders in the Spanish community, and we trained them on a, what a comp plan update was. And had a Zoom webinar explaining why it was important, you know, why members of the Spanish community should be there. And so they went out into their community um to personally invite community members and explain to them why it was important that they be there. Uh, so that meeting was great. We had about thirty attendees. Uh, we did provide babysitting services and dinner. Food was provided. And so what was great is a lot of these community members brought their kids. And so there were about fifteen kids, and we had a last minute decision. Well, let's ask the kids what they want to do. So we had the kids in uh the Callaway Room while the uh parents were in the other one, the hall. And uh, I went and looked in a few times, and the kids were actually writing on the paper what they really wanted to see. And so as the adults were finishing up with their Spanish speaking, um, the kids filed in. So they were cool. And they went up and they reported back to the parents what they wanted. So that, to me, was a a very successful um meeting with the Spanish-speaking community. And I think some lessons we learned, I hope we look at that in the future. But and a lesson learned, which we haven't done yet, is those people are, the people that were at the meeting are going to want to see the result of their effort and why it was worth it. So one of these days, I'll be coming back to you because I'd like to see the comp plan um translated into Spanish. And so it's like, you know, we got to close the loop on it. So um, we did have the in-person, we had about, with the English uh speaking people, we had about seventy people there. And and that was a lot of fun, too. We had, I'm going to go through that later. CT was busy. They held meetings with the environmental board, uh, with CLEAR, uh, with CAPKE, which is the Aging in Community, Nikki Delson and Ron Kocush and all that group. Bike and Ped Commission and also the Carbondale Historic Preservation Commission. And there were six focus groups. I'll go through that in a minute. And then CLEAR sponsored a climate and commu- comprehensive plan meeting in September. And staff, you know, Jean Plano was there, I was there, Cushing Terrell was there. And that was a a great meeting where there was a summit where all the people working on the different parts and pieces of the climate action plan came together and spoke of what they're doing on their part from, you know, the tree board talking about what they're doing with the tree planting and sustainability to um local food production. I think we should have it every year. That was cool. Then then this October, we had the virtual community meeting, Spanish speaking. We did a lot of advertising. We did a lot of advertising, sparsely attended. It, we just need to really use the model we used in August. And then the English-speaking model, that was well-attended. So the focus groups were a part of the community outreach. And we had a number of topics included in there from um, multimodal arts and culture, affordable housing. You know, it's listed in there. And you know, I wanted to make sure we had a, a good representation on the focus groups, on the individuals. And so I, I reached out to a number of people and organizations to help put together a list of who to invite. And um, you know, so we generated a fairly extensive list. And so at the end of the day, eighty-nine, a list eighty-nine people were developed. And it included people from RFTA to the school district, to La Clinica del Pueblo, Carbon Dell Arts, Katie and Kay. Clay Center um, to AVLT, to the Roaring Fork Soccer Club. You know, the list went on. And also business owners. I wanted to make sure business owners and property owners were involved. And so there were a number of individuals. So I think there were six focus group meetings. I didn't attend those. But um, that was all virtually done, but apparently they went pretty well. And then in August, we did the design shret. That was not planned in the scope. And that was part of, little bit of a last-minute thing because we knew Cushing Terrell would be in town on that day. So um, so in addition to advertising the shrets on the website. I, I did a lot of personal outreach and I've been here a long time. So I have all the rosters of all the planning commissioners from the last twenty years. They all got an email from me. I have rosters from all the board members from the last twenty years. They all got emails. I figure those folks of all the people um, have struggled with downtown, downtown north. You know, for, for many years. And uh, I also invited all the town boards and commissions. And um, and then I really focused on, you know, the business owners in the downtown and downtown north. Uh, now that we have Sopris Lodge. And so also, I've dealt with a lot of architects, planners, um, designers that have tried to do work in the HCC Zone District. And struggled with the Zone District. So I wanted to get them to the table. And so I, and I tried to capture the people that weren't included in the focus groups to, to bring those. So as I was doing the personal outreach, PR Studio was doing a lot of the community outreach efforts as far as press releases, advertisements. There's postcards that were handed out. I, they put together a pretty good uh, PowerPoint that I've included in your packet. You know, I know you've been asked this question because I've heard it too, is, so what outreach was not done? And I can see how there was some confusion. People thought we were gonna mail out postcards. The scope did talk about postcards, but it was never intended um, that they'd be mailed out. We printed hundreds and hundreds. They were printed in English and Spanish, handed out at downtown events, distributed around town, um, both in July. And also for the August meeting. And the other question is, why don't we post on community Facebook uh, sites? And the, the town's policy is, is that we only post on Facebook pages that we administer. So we have a certain amount of control. Someone can take it and then post it to another um, Facebook site, um, which is fine. And so we did a number of posts on our Facebook. And uh, the other thing is, um, why we didn't use our email database uh, for advertisements? Is because we saved that for our customers, for the water and sewer. If we start using that for advertising, I think um, it'll lose its effectiveness and people will get mad at us. You know, so, so we've, we've tried. If we made mistakes, yes. Could we do some things better? Yes. And you know, one thing that I learned is, with the Bang the Table, and, and you guys have to think about this. A website in the future, it's gonna be really important to make sure you have someone really watching it. Because it's an interactive website, so you need to have responses. In my case, when I had a consultant, CT, PR Studio and myself, all doing our own different things. Make sure we're really clear on roles and responsibilities and who's gonna do what. But I think we, we refined that and learned uh, some lessons. So where are we at now? What still needs to be done? In September, Cushing Terrell created that list of recommendations. They were draft, they were just based on all of the community feedback from all the community meetings, from the survey, from the um, focus groups, from the design shret. So they created that base list of recommendations uh, in September. And then that's what was reviewed again in October. And then last week, they reissued it um, with revised recommendations that reflect that feedback. And um, and so all of those draft recommendations, the most up-to-date ones, were sent to P and Z. All town boards, commissions, CLEAR and is posted on the website. And um, then the next steps on this is the future land use map uh, implementation matrix, which P and Z is working on now. And the revised draft recommendations will be posted on the Chart Carbon Dell website, hopefully on December sixth. And then people can review that in December and January and, and take their time to review it and submit any comments. And then there would still need to be adoption hearings uh, before P and Z. P and Z makes recommendation to the board. You know, so there's still a lot of work to be done on this. It's a work in progress, but I can see what, what P and Z struggles with is, you know, they've seen this piece, the recommendations. They've seen that piece, the future land use map. They've seen that piece, the implementation matrix. To, but to see it all put together finally, is what'll happen in December. Let's see how these pieces work together. And the other thing that was important for the planning commission was to make sure that CT shows. Where they got these recommendations, um, where they got these suggestions. So to tie the public comment to the recommendations. So um, so that's kinda, that's where we're at now. And one last thing on process is it's important to note that the comprehensive plan doesn't change the code. Once, if, if the comprehensive plan update is adopted. The next step would be a series of amendments to the Unified Development Code. In order to implement the new policies and the comp plan update. And this would also include amendments to the building codes, municipal codes and other town policies. So um, there would still be a lot of work done yet to implement um, what's in that. So that's kind of a, a fast recap of the last. Eight months, seven months? So I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Janet. I know you've been incredibly busy, so thank you. And thank you for all your correspondence on uh, in recent months. So I think the process has gone very well and like you said, we're not perfect. And I appreciate the, the self-reflection on how we can do better next time. So I do appreciate that. To your last point about the next steps, uh, assuming that these updates are approved. When, so there won't necessarily be formal outreach like we've done here, but there'll be public hearings, right? If we decide to change the UDC based on the comprehensive plan, there'll be opportunities for the public to, to weigh in on those specific changes? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Great, okay.
Now I should say, for the UDC, building codes, municipal codes don't require public hearings, so.
Public meetings.
But they will be public meetings.
Okay, great.
So it would be important to, you know, probably what I would do is. Use the Bang the Table now that I've learned how to use it um, for some outreach and try to do some. Some type of public outreach. And I'd see it as one big coordinated effort to amend it instead of a bunch of little amendments.
Okay, great. Questions of Janet? Janet, how did the um, Planning and Zoning meeting go last week? Do you feel like, yeah, I'm interpreting your comments to mean there's still some questions of P and Z and they wanna see it all put together?
Yeah.
Any major red flags?
I think with P and Z, and it, this is one of those hindsight things, is um. I think going into it, P and, P and Z and the community, I will admit. They weren't very clear on the process. And so what was happening with P and Z is we were doing those isolated meetings with CT on the various topics. And then over here, we were doing the series of events and what's going on and, and the Bang the Table. And the two weren't brought together. You know, it seems like maybe P and Z was too much in isolation. So in reality, I keep banging the table, sorry. In reality, is um, over the last weeks, when I saw P and Z saying, well, I don't understand how this is gonna fit together. I started doing this background, telling them, um, okay, this is what a comp plan update is. And a lot of what you see in your memo is what I started putting together to P and Z, just to take some steps back for them. To say, wait, this isn't a whole new comp plan. This is an update. And so I did a series of, of emails to them. You know, and the other thing with P and Z, they're, they're awesome. We are so lucky to have this group of people. We've had a lot of turnover with the planning commission. We have um, four new members this year. So two started in spring. Another two started last time was our first meeting. But the two that just started last month, or last week. They were really involved in the comp plan process, going to the community meetings, to the design shret. You know, in fact, Cade stepped up and was a table leader. And because they were interested in the comp plan, they applied for P and Z. So their, their knowledge level was pretty up there, so. So I'm, I hope that they're feeling more comfortable. And I think when they start seeing all the pieces put together, they'll feel more comfortable.
Okay. Can I ask one more clarifying question? This question came up. So we, we jumped the gun usually in, in a good way, an intentional way. And we decided to update our comp plan sooner than that ten-year milestone.
Yeah.
And that's because we saw lots of changes. My interpretation of that is that might buy us a little bit more time before we have to do a full update. Is that your interpretation? So we're not necessarily gonna redo it in two years? This could buy us a little bit more time?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Yeah. I would say this probably would bring us to, oh Heather, you're in the business probably would have been twenty. Twenty twenty-three, I would say twenty twenty-seven-ish, somewhere in there, I figure.
Okay.
I mean, as long as you have your current, you don't really have to do it via statute for ten years. So you know, we, if this is, yeah, I don't want the date on this is gonna be. But if it's twenty twenty-two, you really can kind of sit on that for the ten years. APA is starting to recommend five, but I think that's, they like giving it some speed, so. Finding that somewhere in between, or hey, there's a lot of changes. And, and you just are making that decision to do it sooner. But, but in terms of, you know, to be able to get funding and all those other things and having a current one. Anywhere that's current in the last ten years, then you're good to go.
Yeah.
Other questions of Janet?
Go ahead, Ben. I have a couple. Um, thanks Janet for the update, first of all. And um, and like I think Dan said, thanks for saying, yeah, we, we've learned a lot of lessons from this. And I think with the communication and the outreach to all of our different parts of our community, especially, especially our Spanish-speaking community. We all just have to keep trying, right? And we have to keep trying different things and seeing how well they go and then trying something else. So I appreciate the effort that went into that, even if some people might think it could have been done better or something like that. As far as the format, um, earlier in the process, my understanding was, even though it's an update. That it would sort of be infused throughout the existing plan. But it sounds like now, is it almost like an appendix? Like I guess it, I, I'm a little bit concerned about the format. And I wanna make sure it's not something where it's like, here's the two zero thirteen comprehensive plan. Oh wow, there's this new thing at the end. Like it just seems like it'll be a little disjointed because they also, they took the three kind of categories of community ecology and whatever else it was. In the first one and like reconfigured those a little bit, so those will kind of clash. Like can you just tell us a little bit about how it's gonna actually be sort of presented and published?
Well, the, those, if you remember the, the three-legged stool, you know, that we had talked about at Great Link. Yeah, they've been replaced. So my understanding, this is what'll be interesting, hoping to see it here pretty quick, is, you know, they're restating all of the goals. The, sorry, the vision, the goals and the strategies. So that's all being restated, so you won't go back to the two zero thirteen.
Okay.
Plan. It's always been envisioned it would be supplement. But like, you don't have to look at the implementation matrix in the two zero thirteen. It's all updated in the supplement. And the uh, framework can um, is gonna be restated then in the supplement.
I would just recommend some discussion around um, a really clear final document, both in print. For, I think it'd be good for all of us to have it, all the board and commission members to have it. As well as, you know, PDF online, that just makes all that really clear. Like maybe that's removing some parts of the two zero thirteen plan that have been replaced with this and leaving those that haven't. But I just think otherwise it'll be confusing. And then like tonight, it was really um, helpful that an applicant said, here's what it says in your comprehensive plan and here's how it responding. But I can see that if there's any conflict between the two, uh, or any difference in how something's approached, which there should be. Because things have evolved, people will choose the one that aligns best to their needs and it'll be confusing. So I think in the end, even though I understand it's not a full rewrite. I think we need one final document, that this is our current comprehensive plan and you don't have to look anywhere else.
Maybe they could redline a table of contents so that we get a sense of how it would integrate. Or, or a, a party diagram or something that shows uh, what Ben's talking about. Because I, I do, I, I think it's, that's a pretty important point. And I think they could convey that pretty simply without having to draft the document first. Is that fair?
Yeah, I will talk to them about that.
I have a couple other quick thoughts, Dan, if I can. And that's just on the outreach and everything, you know, I think the idea of this Bang the Table platform. And Heather, I don't know if you brought that to the, to the group or what, but I think it's a really cool idea. And it didn't launch, you know, very thoroughly with this. I think the total number of comments is like ten or something like that. It's great to hear that the survey worked well, though, and I look forward to um, utilizing that in a more, like you said, a more focused way. And I would just recommend on future projects that we keep the branding really simple. I mean, even comprehensive plan, Chart Carbon Dell and Kaleidoscope and our web, like, nobody knows what any of that means. So just get rid of everything in my mind except, here's our website, here's our current plan. And maybe there's a link over here to the interactive component, but.
Yeah.
I would just simplify that. And my one last question is just um, kind of a two-part thing. One is this, the projected growth and stuff, like the census that came out recently shows that we grew by, what was it, nine people? Which doesn't match anybody's lived experience in Carbon Dell, right? Like everybody thinks that there's something fundamentally flawed there because that doesn't seem right. I just hope that whatever the growth projections are in here, like acknowledges that, that well, here's what the census says. But here's what else is going on and here's why. I mean, the census has ways of calibrating inaccuracies that exist in all communities. It's not just us that have, you know, people in marginal housing and immigration and all these things that might cause them to not respond to the survey, but, or the census. But I just hope that the census and the growth projections seem real, but also based in the, the current data. And then overall, I think, I hope that the final recommendations force people to actually grapple with trade-offs and choices. Because what still stands out to me is, what we want is more housing and no growth. And I just don't wanna end up with a plan that says that. So that's unworkable. So they, I hope Cushing Terrell and the Planning and Zoning and staff and everybody can make that into something workable. Like a recommendation on how do we do more housing and no growth?
So how to, so how to um, you know, the no growth, but we want housing?
Yeah, well, just, I feel like there's some planning processes where you get people together and you know, there's that classic one where it's like, well, the census says you're gonna grow by this many people. So here's that many houses and you. here's that many houses and you got to put them somewhere. And that forces people to deal with the sprawler density conundrum, right? Um, and some people would just scrape all the houses off the table. Um, but I feel like this process, I haven't seen it force people into making difficult decisions. And I know that's our job and that's fine. And we can make those decisions. But I hope that it gives some guidance and not just like, you know, kind of, we want it all. Like, even with downtown north, a very prime area for dense development. It's like, we want a grassy area where people sell local food. Like, that sounds great, but I don't know how um, practical.
Well, it's like, you know, we, we want energy efficient buildings. We want net zero, but we want houses to be more affordable.
Yeah.
But when, you guys know this, when you're doing that with the building codes, you're driving up the cost. So where's the trade-off? You know, where's the balance and?
But thank you for the update.
Yeah. And the Bang the Table website, I don't think we used it to its full capacity. I really don't.
Yeah. It's a little like building your Facebook page. You don't just launch that page and suddenly you have 10,000 followers. Like, it's just not, I'm sorry.
It's, it's just not really, you have to be careful of the expectations. So you know, the whole idea is that be a place where the information is housed, it's user-friendly, it's more attractive. Totally agree on the simplification of branding. Um, and, and then it's to build it over time, like, it can be the place where we would do the trash information, right? It would be the place where whatever the next information on the aquatics facility lands, like, and so you have to slowly build that over time. And so when you look at people that are um, really using Bang the Table to that full capacity, it, you know, they've been using it for years. Um, and so like, check out Boulder, Be Heard Boulder or Steamboat, um, a few of those others. And you'll see, yeah, Be Heard Boulder. And so it, that's, you, you can see how then there's like all these projects are stacked on there. So it's really hard out of the gate to like, just don't gauge the success of Bang the Table based on, you know, seven months and 10 comments. Because that will just grow over time. People have to get used to going there to find the information and that always just takes a while. Um, so that's just what I would say. But the critical piece is that we use it. Um, you know, I think, and having the resources to keep it updated and used in that way is probably the hardest part after the consultants are gone, or, you know. So whether that's a little chunk of PR studio is always going to be their interaction um, with, with the Bang the Table site or, um, because, you know, some, I know some of our past clients, like, they're just struggling to keep it updated. And then it'll kind of fizzle and they won't see the value and you won't keep it. Um, and maybe that's okay, but I think it is a really good tool. And you just, you know, use it to its fullest extent for this one project. Then, you know, then it's the whole group has to think about how it gets used.
That's good perspective. Thank you. Um, one last thing, Janet, I think it, it would be important for transparency purposes to list all the, all the people who participated in focus group meetings somewhere, just so that it's documented.
Their actual names?
I think so.
Okay. And I can do it. I just, I hesitate. Um, so that's why I focus on organizations, but I can list the names easily. I have them. So.
Because it's a public process.
Yeah, okay. And I can do, I think, did I keep that? I think I can, we'll do that with the focus groups. I'll start there.
Okay.
I'll have to check my documentation on the other stuff. The other stuff might be a little more general. Um, but I could create that if need be.
Great. Well, this has been a really helpful update. So thank you.
Okay. Yep.
You have a restful.
Warren, if you have any other questions, you can always pick up the phone, give me a call, ask. So, um, good.
Awesome. There's Bang the Table in Chester, Connecticut.
Really?
Wow.
No way.
Do they really?
Might have an experienced person coming.
That's pretty fun.
From somebody from Chester on their website, like about how great it is.
Like, I know that town.
Yeah. I never heard of it till last week.
Talk about Zoom and all the other tech companies that went through the roof. Definitely those guys.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, for sure. They got, they actually got bought right at the end of the pandemic.
All right.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Janet. Have a nice Thanksgiving. Hope you get some rest. Moving on to item number nine is the aquatics facility financing. And I, there's, there's Renee.
Well, there's not a mic there.
You can sit where I was at.
Yeah.
Sit next to Lonnie. Pretend to be Mark.
Well, tonight we're going to look at the aquatics facility proposal. This has been something that's been coming forward and something the board wanted to look at. So in doing so, you also hired a municipal financial advisor to help us look at all the different proposals that can be done and how we go about financing this so that we could possibly go to an election in April. And with that, um, I'm going to turn it over to Maddie and Jason with Hilltop Securities that we signed a contract with so that they can explain the different options that the town has.
Hi, Maddie and Jason.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, Renee, do you want me to share my screen? I know the uh, table that we're going to kind of talk through is in the packet.
Do share your screen, Maddie.
Okay, perfect. One second. Okay. So I know there's a lot of text on here, so I will um, kind of try to scroll through uh, as best I can. But if you ever have an issue seeing something or want me to pause, just let me know. Uh, so for purposes of introduction, my name is Maddie Perdonic and my colleague Jason Simmons is on here as well. And we work for Hilltop Securities. Um, you know, from a brief background, we serve as municipal advisor to uh, cities, towns, counties, school districts um, throughout the state of Colorado, uh, and help them think through similar issues that you all are grappling with, regarding how to finance um, various projects, including aquatic center. So I, I know you all have, over the last several months, have really dug down into some of the capital side of things. And so we're here to sort of help think through what your financing options might be. Um, and I think, you know, uh, Renee, feel free to interrupt me if I am wrong. Um, but, you know, the intent of this is not necessarily to make a decision, obviously at this point, but hopefully to get just some feedback from you all. So we can kind of refine our analysis and, and proposals and, and help as far as uh, moving closer to that potential ballot question in April, if that is the direction that you all choose to go down. So this summary table really uh, is meant to kind of provide a high-level overview of really sort of, I guess, the five main options that we see uh, as financing options for this aquatic center. The one that obviously is not on here that I do want to mention is just the certificates of participation, but our understanding is that you all kind of talked through that. Um, and we're really focusing more on either a tax, sales tax bond back with existing sales taxes, or potentially kind of exploring maybe what opportunities there are to help um, increase revenues through some type of tax increase to offset that debt service. So our first option here is the recreation sales and use tax bond. So this is about as basic as it would get. Um, the town already, as you know, has a recreation sales and use tax. Uh, the ballot question would then just allow for the issuance of debt to be supported with those revenues. Um, so there's no tax increase. It, it directly links essentially the purpose, uh, the original intent of that sales tax to a uh, facility that would be supported by that tax. Uh, you know, from our perspective, we are not, you know, communication experts, but um, we would assume this is probably going to be the most voter-friendly option of the five that we're going to talk through today. Um, you know, some of the pieces uh, that we kind of brought to uh, the conversation with Renee and Eric uh, around this option is that obviously those revenues that are currently flowing into that recreation sales and use tax fund are already being used for other purposes, right? So um, there are existing sales tax bonds that mature in 2024 that uh, those revenues are paying debt service on. There also are other operational costs of the recreation facilities of the town that are paid out of those revenues. And increasing the debt service that um, is obligated off of those revenues is obviously just going to potentially constrain the uses for, of those funds for other purposes, either as they are currently intended or planned for in the future. Um, and that would include also the, you know, the operation of the to-be-constructed facility. Um, from a, you know, our, our line of sight, I guess I'll say on all of these, uh, is really the financing option for the town. And so really, we look at everything, each of these five options through a credit lens. Um, so that's why you'll see the assumed rating here. This option is the lowest rating of the five uh, in the single A category. Um, just as a overview, the ratings typically fall in sort of triple A is the highest option, uh, highest rating level, double A is one below that, single A and then continues on. So still a decent credit quality. Uh, the lower rating here compared to the others is really based on that limited tax pledge. So you just don't have as many revenues flowing into that repayment option. You have a lower, lower coverage ratio, potentially higher risk for investors, which is why you have a lower rating, uh, which then results in a higher debt cost. Um, you know, I do want to point out, I'm not going to go through all the numbers at the bottom here in detail. But what we put together is just sort of um, summary information for a 25-year term for both a $7 million and $8 million project fund. Um, you'll see that the difference in debt service and really interest cost is really not that meaningful uh, from a big picture perspective between these five options. So, you know, from our view, uh, all of these are viable and all of these are um, acceptable, I guess I'll say, in the, the general public finance markets. Um, so, you know, unfortunately, the numbers aren't necessarily going to drive uh, fully the, the decision-making process here, most likely, but more so sort of the overall um, you know, revenue use, uh, opportunity costs, things like that. But you'll see her that the, this annual debt service number down here at the bottom uh, is really what that maximum annual debt service would be per, for, for a year uh, over the full 25-year term. We have a total repayment number here and then just that interest cost. So uh, the first segment here is for the $7 million and then $8 million project funds um, below that. So then moving on to option two, and feel free to interrupt me throughout if you have any questions, but option two would just be a general sales and use tax bond. So uh, the, the town has the recreation sales and use tax already existing. There's also just a general sales and use tax in place that we would be able to then essentially, similar to option one, you would ask a debt question that would just allow for those revenues to repay the debt service on that bond. Um, this is a broader revenue pledge. It opens up the opportunity to utilize other revenues of the town uh, to repay that debt service and not solely focused on that recreation sales tax, uh, which sort of helps from the potential burden that that debt service places on the recreation sales tax fund. Um, this obviously doesn't necessarily create as much of a direct link as you would see sort of an option one between recreation uh, sales tax revenues and recreation uses. Um, but would potentially help with uh, providing some additional revenue opportunities to be able to offset some operating costs of this new facility. Um, the other thing that I do want to point out there is, is while those other revenues are pledged, they are not required. You know, the town could pledge those full revenues, but if you are able to repay debt service with just the recreation and sales tax revenues, uh, you do not have to then go sort of tap into those revenues. It's not a requirement. It just allows you to have that broader pledge, which leads to a higher credit rating because you just have a lot more funds available to be able to pay that debt service. You have a higher coverage ratio. Um, you're potentially not as susceptible to changes in the economy. Uh, so from an investor perspective, you know, there's just more dollars to go around. And again, you'll see at the bottom here, that difference in debt service is really not that.
We have a question.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
I have a question too. So uh, my understanding is that there might be a year or two where there'd be overlap from a present sales news recs tax going to support the rec center and the aquatic facilities tax, correct?
Yes, yes. So uh,
This Plan B or Plan Two, whatever it is, would give us the option of using other funds to supplement that for the year or two where there's an overlap?
Correct.
Okay. And one other thing, the double A rating, all these ratings say in double A would be considered investment grade?
Correct, yes. Single A, uh, the everything, any option that we're discussing, we would expect to be investment grade.
Okay. But a, a double A rating would obviously be more appealing to investors and it's possible that some investment whatever firms have a requirement that they can invest in anything other than double A or above.
Correct, exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions there? Okay. Um, so option three is essentially just building off of option two. Uh, this would just now also include a sales tax increase. So uh, all of the existing revenues would essentially be pledged, the thought being that there would be a tax increase that would be sufficient to cover debt service. So you're not impacting any existing uh, sales tax revenues of the town. Um, the, there's a couple of different ways that the question can be asked. Um, there can be just a blanket sales tax increase that exists in perpetuity. That sales tax increase could be tied to the final repayment of the debt. So, so long as those bonds are no longer outstanding, then that sales tax rate would go back down. Um, but in general, the sort of the most important benefit, I guess I'll say here, is that you are uh, creating a new revenue stream. So you're not having to divert existing revenues to go pay the debt service on these uh, to be issued bonds. From a big picture perspective, uh, the actual coverage is increased is not that material because we would expect really that sales tax increase would just cover the debt service. So um, while yes, it would be about, you know, $400,000 in this example. Um, it's not going to really move the needle. I guess I'll say all that much on the overall coverage ratio. So we would expect the rating to be about the same. But again, still very strong in the double A category. Um, with, you know, uh, the same financing statistics essentially for option three that you saw in option two. So then, moving into options four and five, we're sort of moving away from sales taxes. And now we're going to start talking a little bit about property taxes. Um, so option four here is this limited tax general obligation bond. And so what the intent behind this is, this is probably the most complicated one to explain on this table. But essentially, you would increase, have the ability to increase property taxes from a dedicated mill levy uh, to pay debt service, but it would be restricted in amount, uh, sort of, or in the mill levy itself would be restricted. Um, so you could not increase the mill levy above, say, three mills or two mills. Uh, and whatever you get in revenues from that would then go to pay debt service, but you also could offset that with other sales tax, other generally available revenues of the town, essentially. So what you could do, the thought behind this is that you have existing debt service coming out of the recreation sales and use tax fund, but it is less than what they were projecting for the debt service on the aquatic center. So essentially, you could then uh, roll over those revenues that are going to pay that debt service as soon as that debt service matures in 2024. You would then be able to use those revenues to now pay that service on the uh, the new debt, but it obviously wouldn't cover the total debt service. So then you would have a property tax mill levy that would cover the rest. So it would sort of be a combined revenue source uh, to repay the debt service. That would cover the rest. So it would sort of be a combined revenue source uh to repay the debt service. Again, that is very complicated to explain to the, to uh voters. Uh particularly, you know, in a community like yours that doesn't necessarily discuss or uh consider debt questions very frequently. This is a. A much, much more complicated question to try to explain and talk about tax impacts. And what it, what it means for your community. Um but it does provide the flexibility of having revenue uh sources from different areas that allows you to potentially, if the, if the route was to. Increase taxes to be able to offset some of this debt service, the sort of. Uh blends, I guess, the option of either a full tax increase to pay the debt service or no tax increases, middle of the road. Um but again, you know, from a repayment perspective, uh or rating, credit rating perspective and anticipated debt service. We sort of fall in the same options two, three and four really kind of fall in the same category just because. Again, you're, you are getting a revenue increase, but it's not going to be material enough to necessarily move the needle on the actual credit rating of those bonds.
Maddie, let me jump in here and um this is Jason at Hilltop. And I think, you know, the, the, while it's a little bit more complicated, uh the, the option of this limited tax G O. Gives you flexibility to kind of set your mill levy uh on an as-needed basis where if you were increasing your sales tax. Um that would just be increased on a more permanent thing. The, the mill levy would be more of like, as you're setting your budget on an annual year, you could. If you had a mill levy, you could increase to the mill or not as needed. Um so it, it's, that's the, the benefit of that one. While it is a little more complicated. Um does give you a little bit more flexibility in managing that tax increase.
Yeah, to Jason's point, if the question would allow for you to levy, say, up to to two mills to pay debt service. But really, you only needed one in the upcoming, right when you certify your um mill levy every December. Based on that assessed value, uh your anticipated sales tax revenues to sort of. Pay the other portion of that debt service. If all you needed to levy was one mill, that's all, all you would need to levy essentially. So. And to Jason's point, it allows you to, you can change that year to year so long as you don't go above that sort of max mill levy that's set in the question. But it does allow you to sort of change it based on what your actual needs are to pay debt service based on budget, you know, projected sales tax revenues, those types of things. Um that can then allow you to really limit that tax increase potentially on the, on the mill levy side. Um depending on, you know, how sales tax revenues uh adjust going forward. Okay, and then finally, option five is this unlimited, limited, or sorry, unlimited tax general obligation bond, which is just a. Really what we consider to be sort of a standard general obligation bond. Um the question would allow for the town to increase um the mill levy up to the amount necessary to pay for debt service. So. Different from option four where you have a mill levy cap. So as I was saying before, that those two mills. Um in this option, you would be required to levy the mills necessary to pay debt service regardless of what that is. Up until up to a maximum annual repayment amount that would be set in the ballot question. But as an example, if you needed to levy three mills to pay debt service, that is what you would be required to levy so long as it falls. Um within those, those ballot requirements under Tabor. Um again, the benefit here is it creates a dedicated revenue stream uh that would fully support that debt service. Um and again, kind of similar to option three with the sales tax increase typically with um with a general obligation bond, what you would see is that property tax. Would increase up until the debt service is repaid. So uh the year after the final maturity of those bonds. The town would no longer levy a mill because there's no debt service outstanding. So property, you know, that mill levy rate would then decline in the following year after the debt matures. Um this, while we call it a double A credit rating, uh general obligation bonds are basically as good as you get from an investor perspective. So. While the rating may not be all that different, the investor view, we would expect to be slightly better than any of these other options. And so that's why you'll see. These debt service numbers um are a little bit lower, a slightly lower interest rate. Um just because of that differential and the underlying credit fundamentals, even if the rating difference isn't there.
And this is, you know, I just wanted to. Um or does somebody have a question?
Nope.
Okay, I, I just wanted, Maddie, we scroll back down to the um bottom part. Um, you know, I just wanted to, you know, reference is what Maddie said to begin with, the, the, the total repayment costs in the annual and the interest rates are not drastically different. Um right now, we are in a period of time where the municipal market is, is um. Uh there's a lot of demand, interest rates are low, credit spreads are narrow, um i- in a more difficult market environment. Uh going kind of from left to the right, the, the tax bond. Um secured solely by the, the rec sales tax would be the most challenging to do, whereas the unlimited tax G O. Um there's always a market for unlimited tax G Os. And so from left to right, you have the, the more complicated, could be challenging and difficult market to the, to the easiest on the right. But e- even in more challenging markets, where you're not going to see, you know, while we have a three seventy-six. Uh on the single A sales tax to the three sixty-seven on the G O, that might widen out maybe another ten or fifteen basis points. So it's. It's not material. So, you know, I think what Maddie said at the beginning is the financial cost is one of it, and as we're trying to demonstrate here. Um there's not a huge difference between these options. Other factors need to play into it as well in terms of kind of. Voter appetite, voter messaging. Um and then also, again, as Maddie said, this is really focusing on the cost of the capital, the debt service cost for the bonds. Um you know, the other thing to factor into is the operational costs and, you know, the need for those existing revenues that the town already has. Um you know, the other thing there is, we do want to point out is what, you know, those three point six, three point seven interest rates. Um you've actually added one and a half percent to the interest rates. If, if you were to do this transaction today. You'd be closer into the two and a half interest rate where I range um is where we are seeing things right now. Um we just add one and a half percent to give a, a better cushion. You know, if you were to go to the ballot in April, he's going to be issued sometime in late in twenty twenty-two to, to be able to provide um. Some, some interest rate cushion as we are in increasing interest rate environment.
That's good to know.
And I think on building on that, depending on which question um you might decide to go with. There are different requirements from a Tabor perspective of parameters that go into that question. Um and so. Like as a general obligation bond question as an example, we would have. A maximum manual and a total repayment cost. And so we typically would like to add in cushion because as Jason said, we're going to be. You would draft a question in December and January for bonds that you would not issue until, you know, almost a year later, essentially. Um we like to have a little bit of cushion in there. So as interest rates fluctuate, you still have the ability to issue all of the debt to be able to fully fund your project. And so these types, these numbers are, are more aligned with what we would expect to see in a debt question. Now, not necessarily what you would actually get from a borrowing cost. We, uh you know, as Jason said, we have a lot of interest rate cushion built in here. You would hope for it to be lower. By the time the town would actually go to sell the bonds, you have a lower interest rate, lower debt service.
Great. Color municipalities issue all, all these types of, of, um you know, obligations. Um sales tax next to C O P, sales tax obligations are probably the most common for um Colorado municipalities. Um that is a, a very common. And again, we have uh clients who issue more limited open space parks and rec sales tax, which would be. Uh more similar to your rec sales tax. Then we have some that do a more general, like options two and three. So. Um these are all used by Colorado municipality. Um, you know, and, and so we do have experience with all of them. So again, different factors can, can help uh guide your decisions on which you think is best for the town.
Great. Thanks, Jason. Thanks, Melanie. Are, are you guys good if we open it up for some questions right now?
Of course.
Clear as mud. Go ahead, Heather.
Uh so on option one, does, maybe this isn't an issue, but from a timing perspective, the existing loan is paid off in twenty twenty-four. And so if we're, do we have to wait until then? Because I mean, we're, we'd be issuing bonds in twenty twenty-two. Presumably starting to pay them off. And so for at least a couple of years, it's kind of a duplication of, of debt service on the rec center and. Cool.
Okay.
Um.
But hang on, you asked, would we have to wait? You said there's overlap. Does that mean we'd have to wait?
Yeah, so there is a couple of options. So you don't have to wait. Um and it sort of depends on. The availability of funds within the recreation fund to pay debt service. So. One option is that you could just issue the bonds uh as interest only for two years. So uh if we sold the bonds in twenty twenty-two. You would not pay any principal in twenty-three and twenty-four. So you would have a slight increase in debt service, but it would only be the interest component. So if, as an example, if the fund was able to absorb. Say another hundred and fifty thousand or two hundred thousand of debt service, that would just be the interest component, then we could do that. Um another option would be to do capitalized interest. So essentially the town would be borrowing for. Interest upfront uh so that you would then essentially borrow the amount to pay the interest components in twenty-three and twenty-four. Um so that you would then not have any additional pressure on the recreation fund. And then sort of those regular debt service payments would resume on the new bonds, you know, from twenty twenty-five going forward. That does obviously make it more expensive because you're essentially borrowing. Upfront to pay interest over, you know, the next two years. But it would alleviate any additional pressure in those specific two years. You just have a higher debt service in years twenty-five and thereafter because you're, you're borrowing more money.
Do you want me to just go through? Um and so. Uh just as a threshold, what does the existing sales and use tax bring in right now?
Would you like to give her that information?
I've got it because I asked Renee an email, same question.
I have sources.
Um, I mean, the, the projection is what's most important to me. The projection for twenty twenty-two is just under a million, so nine hundred and ninety-four thousand. And that's going up pretty dramatically. In twenty nineteen, it was six seventy-six hundred thousand. Twenty twenty was seven hundred and thirty-two thousand. This year, nine hundred and forty-seven. So I'm thinking of it as a million dollars as a projection as a ballpark because it's nine ninety-four for twenty twenty-two.
A non-recession ballpark. Correct. Okay, and then um, so then. On, on all of these, I guess, well, not all, but on three, four and five. Um i- is this that we're looking at set on some particular basis, like. Like on option three, it's a, you know, twenty-five percent sales tax increase? Or, or like, is there a particular mill levy on four and five that's kind of generating this? Or not really, because you're just doing the debt service on it. You're not actually looking at revenue generation.
Yeah, so I can speak to, so from, we are looking at it, at it from a debt service perspective, but then we would work with. The town to sort of figure out what those tax increases would be. So Renee probably can help on the tax, sales tax side a little bit better, but. Like as an example, on option five. To fully cover that debt service based on the town's assessed value from last year, you would be sort of just under three mills. Um to, to fully cover that debt service, that annual debt service. Um so that is something that we would help with if, if, you know, those are the options that you would go down. Same thing on option four. That one's a little bit trickier. Um, you know, from a ballot question perspective, we would want the ability from a credit. Perspective to be able to increase up into, up to the mill necessary to fully cover debt service. But again, we would expect that. Actual mill levied by the town to be less. So in that instance. You know, if it was three mills for option five, then it would probably be like a mill, you know, one and a half mills for option four, but that really would depend upon how much. Sales tax revenues, the town would want to divert to paying that debt service. If that makes sense.
It does. And that leads to my last question, which was just timing wise, like. How do we build the full picture of this, not just related to what we bring in right now? What this would increase, but then also, I felt like we never got a really robust picture of the operational costs of an eight million dollar pool. And so this is putting Eric on the spot. I, I think that that fell really short in the master plan of, you know, it's one thing to pay the debt service. It's another to then operate a what? I, I don't know, because I don't know that we understood very robustly. You know, both what, what new revenue would bring in, how we felt about that, like our cost recovery on the pool. And then, you know, so what happens when that pool costs whatever, three quarters of a million to operate every year? And we're only doing twenty-five percent, you know, revenue recovery. So in this process. When and how do we see that very like robust picture of everything that goes into this, not just this debt service?
Why is everybody looking at me?
Do you want to, do you want to jump in on that?
Focus on a zoom screen.
Well, let me, let me take the quick stab at that first. You know, our meeting in December, we're going to talk a little bit about. What does this, excuse me, seven or eight million dollars buy us? And I think part of that discussion is going to be, here's the capital. And this is what it would buy us, but then thinking about, okay, what would it take to operate that? Because there will be the. If I had to take a stab at it. Whatever you build with the seven or eight million dollars is probably going to be. Eighty percent of your operational cost. For the whole facility, if you were to build the whole facility at once, at least. I mean, you're talking about the major components, I'm sure, the pool, the building. Those are where your costs are going to be to operate. I don't think adding a splash pad in the future is going to really increase your operational cost. So I, I would suggest that we'll break that down and get into more detail on that on the fourteenth.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't see how we can take this on if that's not pretty dialed.
Yeah.
So that, I might add a follow-up question. If. If we pursued option two. And then decided. Um, oh geez, we do need, you know, thinking that we don't need to add a new. Sales or any kind of new tax, and then we decide later, well, no, we wanted to add ten splash pads and we need more money. Um, how, how would that change things if we wanted to come back and add a, a revenue source later?
From a perspective of the original debt issuance, it, it won't, the, the. Basically, at the time that the bonds are sold is when we're creating that revenue pledge. Um but obviously, any future sales tax increase can be used. Um right to offset those operational costs. If, if you think the, you know, the existing sales tax revenues are going to pay debt services. A new sales tax revenue in the future would be to pay, help offset operating costs or um. You know, the, there can be a new revenue pledge essentially created uh for an additional sales tax bonds in the future that would be. Separate with just the new pledge, but from a perspective of the bonds to be issued, sort of is what we're talking about right now. Um it won't impact those bonds in any way, shape or form.
Okay, but then you're in new bonds.
But you would, you would have to go probably do another vote, right? So it's.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, just to be clear. Yeah.
Yeah.
Um Renee or your source, of what are we currently paying on the loan on the rec center?
It's approximately two hundred and six thousand dollars a year.
And did I hear you correctly? Uh currently about nine hundred thousand is rec and sales use tax?
Yes.
So then we should have enough coverage to pay both uh if we have them at the same time.
You're also using that revenue to pay for other things in the rec fund.
Okay.
Like operated.
But then with that plan two. For those overlap years, we could use other sales tax revenues to help.
You could use other sales tax that is now going into the general fund.
Fund to help cover it for those two years. Thank you. I have a question for you guys is, are you. Allowing, you said you're allowing for basically future tax increases. That's why these numbers are what they are. So you're allowing for, like you say. Two-quarter percent increases in the year from now to the time the bonds went to sell. Is that what I'm understanding?
You mean.
So we're.
Interest rate increases.
Yeah, so we're factoring in a, a one and a half percent increase. So uh which is pretty sizable. So yes, between now and when the bonds would be sold. So yes, between now and when the bonds would be sold, interest rates essentially across the yield curve could rise by one point five percent. Um, and that would be the numbers that we're, we're showing here.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody feel strongly about one option or another?
I had one more.
Okay.
You guys talked about how number four is pretty complicated. Um, do, when, when you ask uh, that particular ballot question, are you essentially having to ask both, hey, we want to be able to use the sales and recs and, you know, we, we want to be able to do a mill levy? Like, you pretty much have to ask the voters both, you have to kind of make it that complex, you can't just use your sales and use tax to pay it. So be asking only for the mill levy increase.
Yeah, so we're, obviously, I'll put the disclaimer out that we are not attorneys. Um, but we worked on a question just like this in this last, uh, November election. And essentially, the way that the question was worded is, it says, you know, shall the town's debt be increased by X million? Uh, you know, with a total repayment, yada, 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 not with, and a mill levy not to exceed, let's say, in this instance, three mills. Uh, and then later on in the question, it allows, essentially allows the town to then also use other, it'll say to be repaid with the debt revenues from the dedicated mill levy or other available revenues of the town to pay debt service. And so that other available revenues allows you to then use really anything else, um, to, as so long as it would be allowed on that, essentially under the initial formation of that tax to pay the debt service. So really, it reads more like a general obligation bond question. It's just that there's a clause essentially that's going to be in there that would allow you to use other, other available revenues of the town to pay that debt service.
Did it pass?
I was thinking that.
Did, did it pass, Melanie?
Uh, it did not. But again, I think that the challenge, right, is, um, is an example. So we, for, for this, for this, we would say if the mills necessary to pay debt service are, again, I'm just going to use round numbers, let's say it's three mills. But we're not anticipating using all of that from a credit perspective. We want to ask the question so that you can levy those full three mills. And so then it's, it's, I, this is where I think the confusion kind of comes in sometimes in the communication is that, you know, you're going to ask the question that says there's three mills, but the anticipation by the town may be to only levy one and a half mills, right? Because you're going to use those other revenues to pay debt service. And I think that, um, one can kind of make it a little bit more complicated. Also, the city that used that structure, um, I don't, the projects were a little bit, uh, I will say not all, not fully supported, I guess I'll say by the community. So, um, you know, those two things combined, uh, usually don't end up well, so.
Yeah, and, you know, what we saw at the last election cycle was voters being very, very selective um, on what passed, um, you know, that, that community, front range community, most of them were transportation type, um, projects, which obviously um, are not, uh, you know, very favorable at times. Uh, another of our clients had, uh, a sales tax extension pass for open space, but the same community voted down a sales tax increase for, uh, public safety and fire. So, um, you know, this last election cycle was, was very driven by the actual prod, at least from our experience, from our clients, um, was, was really focused on, you know, almost cherry picking projects that they liked more so than what the taxes were.
Thanks, Jason. Luis, uh, thanks, Jason, thanks, Mary. Can you remind me, what's the increase per like hundred thousand of assessed value for three mills?
Yeah, so that would be about twenty dollars a year per hundred thousand of residential.
Great, thank you. And how much is it for commercial?
It would be like quickly.
So that's considerably more than five B that just passed.
Yeah.
How many mills?
Then it wasn't mills, it was, yeah. Four or five times the rate.
What is the sales, what is, um, the reserves in the rec budget right now?
One point nine. Year you're looking at, at the end of next year, one point nine million. Can you hear me at all?
Yeah.
Okay. Great, yeah, I, I just wanted to provide a, a little bit of background just on, uh, some of the findings from our two master plan efforts on this project. Um, our, our recreation, uh, trails, um, and programs master plan back in two thousand and fifteen, looked at, you know, how to fund the, the pool, and they did a pretty deep dive there. And, you know, they, they came up with, um, um, option three, really, an increase in, in sales and use tax. And, uh, and they had it either in perpetuity to cover the new debt or, or they also had an option for a sunset of that once that debt was, was serviced. Um, and then our recent, just recently, we did a, you know, aquatic facility master plan. And they had a multi-pronged process, but one of their options was really a combination of, um, option one, using our rec sales and use tax, uh, revenue, but increasing the, um, sales tax. Um, and it would sunset after that, but by a very small percentage. Um, and they thought that that might potentially be, um, attractive to voters to, to get a new aquatics facility, um, because it's sunset and because it was a, a smaller percentage of, of that, uh, sales and use tax increase. Um, literally from a point five to like a point six or point seven. So it, it didn't represent a, a large amount of money, but it just represented, uh, a gap that needed to be filled um, potentially, um, in, in paying, paying off the bonds and utilizing that rec sales and use tax, uh, for operations. And just, just for some additional numbers, I did kind of run some of our operations, what we're utilizing the rec sales and use tax revenue, um, how we're utilizing that and how, as far as subsidizing our existing operations. So, and right now, it does subsidize the rec center and it does subsidize the pool and, and some staffing, so. Um, and these are based on sixty-five percent cost recovery of the rec center and thirty-five percent cost recovery of the pool. And those combined subsidies for operational wise, um, for those two facilities is about three hundred and twenty thousand, um, per year. So that kind of just gives you a basis of what operations presently, um, with our existing pool and existing rec center, um, what's being, uh, used out of that rec sales and use tax fund on an annual basis. So just some more information.
Thanks, Eric, that's helpful.
And Eric, when you say like filling that delta, why do you like, or, or why do you think the findings around using an increase in maybe sunsetting sales tax versus four that uses the existing sales and rec? Um, but could use property tax to fill that gap? What do, what do you see as like pros and cons between one of those to fill the gap?
You bet, um, you know, to me, I think, I think these guys nailed the pros pretty well on the, the most voter-friendly one is number one, for sure. And, uh, you know, that's, that's a pretty easy sell, uh, to the public, you know? We're, we're going to be able to do this without, you know, increasing your taxes. Um, so, so, so that one, as far as voter-friendly, I mean, I think, I think that's, that's fantastic. That's, that's been the concern all along with the consultants on, on this project is, is kind of, you know, the appetite of the public to in, increase taxes for a seasonal facility. Um, you know, that is not utilized by everybody. And, and so that one, you know, definitely has, has gained traction, um, you know, through, through the processes we've been in the last couple of years. Uh, especially, you know, Parks and Rec Commission have really worked on thinking hard about how to do this without raising taxes. And that's been a message that has been shared with the public, um, quite a bit too. So something to think about just on the backend, so.
You know, and this is Jason, and if you don't mind me jumping in just to expand on that a little bit more, I, I think the, the sales tax, um, you know, the, the one benefit of a sales tax, uh, I, I don't know if it's a benefit, it's just a different way of looking at it as a sales tax. Um, revenues are generated from, uh, obviously, uh, town of Carbondale, but also people driving through, visiting, shopping at your stores, eating at restaurants. Um, so it's a little bit broader of a tax base. Uh, whereas the options four and five, the property tax are also just driven by the residents, the property owners within the town. So, um, you know, depends on different communities, do you think different ways? Um, if it's a facility that could be used by, um, those who are not necessarily town residents, but they come in and then they're, they're buying things and, and paying sales tax, that might be a reason to use a sales tax. If it wants to be more of a, a resident-driven, you know, community resource, maybe that's a, a reason to use a property tax.
Thanks, Jason. Um, this is all good stuff and we could talk about it for a long time. I'm gonna, I'm gonna offer some thoughts to just try and wind it down. To me, I see options one through three as, um, ones that are, um, attractive to me, uh, for the reasons we've talked about, that Jason just mentioned and other reasons. I don't see a, in a place to pursue property tax right now, although I, I like the, the diversity. Um, it seems like one would be if we, if we don't think the voters have much faith in this at all, and we just want to kind of snake by, we go with option one. Option two, for me, provides us the most, most flexibility. Um, we could use, it, it would re, rely on a little bit of trust from the voters to say, well, if you need to, you could tap into your general sales tax fund, but we wouldn't if we didn't have to. Um, but it's not a new revenue source like has been communicated in the past, but it doesn't prevent us from going to a, um, uh, a new revenue source if we need to in the future. Um, because I do think that's sort of what has been communicated so far is we're not, I, I don't think we're ready to ask the voters, we couldn't ask the voters for a new tax in April anyway, but, um, two seems to, for me, provide the most flexibility, but welcome thoughts, Ben.
Yeah, that's exactly where I ended up. And i- if we're also talking about the amount, seven or eight million, it seems like you got to go with the higher amount at this point, just with cost overruns and, and everything, and I'm sure it's going to come out to more than that. Um, but option two is where, um, I landed. Um, you know, it seems that it's sort of a, about a three hundred thousand dollar question, right? Because it's like that we have to find three hundred thousand dollars because we're spending approximately two hundred every year right now on the rec center loan. This is going to cost approximately five hundred thousand, trying to use round numbers here. We've got approximately three hundred thousand to find. And I'd like at our next meeting to see more about the existing, you know, of that million dollar projection. And Heather's right to point out that's in a good year, that that's a projection, that's in our highest year ever. Um, you know, how much sort of unallocated is in there? Um, that would otherwise go to, you know, new playgrounds and new projects. And I think the community understanding that that means that a lot of that stuff's not going to happen. Like, we're really going to focus our rec, uh, tax on this if we do that. I think I'm hesitant to ask the voters for an increase in tax on this because I think there are other priorities coming out of the comp plan, um, housing and transit among them, that might require a new source of revenue at some point in the next few years. And I don't think we're going to be able to do both. So I think that if we're going to do this, I think we have to be able to cover it with existing revenues. And, um, my last thought is just, um, the nicotine tax. I mean, and whether we can use some of that for this, so I've got the, the language up of that tax right now, and I understand that that's volatile, that it's, hopefully will go down under time, over time, I get all that. But it does specifically say that it can be used for promotion of mental and physical health. And, you know, we could get a legal opinion, but we, we put that on the ballot. We talked about stuff like this. And so maybe of the three hundred thousand we're looking for, we commit to a hundred thousand of it coming from that, the first hundred thousand from that every year is going to this. And then whatever's above and beyond that is to this other group that's giving grants for other after-school programs. But I think in my mind, that would pass a legal test of, um, compatibility. And then we're looking for two hundred thousand, you know, and do we have that sort of unallocated in the, the rec tax? I'm not going to be very supportive of this if we don't think we can cover it through the rec tax and the nicotine tax. If we think that it's going to infringe on our ability to pursue other priorities, um, outside of recreation priorities, I'm going to have a really hard time getting behind it.
And we don't need to decide on nicotine tax, we would just need to pick two item or option two if we wanted to.
Right, but I just want to, if we're going down that road, I'd want to know, like, is that really feasible? Because that's the one other source that I could see pulling from. I can't see pulling from just our general fund, um, on this.
So let's try and gain some, go around the room, we'll go, we'll go this way. Marty, you have a preference?
Uh, yeah, I mean, to me, it's either two or three. Two, because I think we need the, uh, ability to access funds from general funds if we need them, especially for that first year or two with this overlap, uh, that we're still paying off the rec center. The other thing is with three, the Parks and Rec, if they want to have money for other projects and, uh, whether it's a quarter percent with a ten-year sunset or whatever, it would give you a cushion with the pool and it would also provide funding for other projects, the playgrounds, I mean, not neglected, but they're not getting the love that they need.
Okay. Erica?
Um, I think I'm following, uh, where you guys are, it would be, um, it feels like we could find the money, um, ourselves and not have to do a tax. Um, I'd want to entertain it and maybe look at some numbers, um, look at a little more. We could, uh, you know, we have increased our facilities, we have a pickleball court now, we have, and maybe it's a more general, like, this funds this, but it provides a cushion for all of our expanded rec center facilities, or, I don't know. I'm, I'm not super articulate at this point, um, in my day, but, um, uh, yeah, that's where I'm following.
Okay, Heather.
I mean, I think one and two, I, I don't see how even, even just from we fi, when we finish the aquatics master plan, the priorities of the community are changing, right? Seeing the last twelve to eighteen months. So, um, I just think they'd be like, that's not where we need to spend an increase. So I think it's got to be one or two, and I'm just going to continue to harp. I mean, if we're three hundred and twenty thousand on the O and M subsidy now, what does that look like on an eight million dollar facility? Um, and we have to see that entire picture. Um, and two at least gives us like, whatever, that cushion. I, I just, I'm so nervous about the big wobbly one-legged stool, right? And so there's something about four that at least you have that option at some point that you're able to con, combine some other sources to ensure you, you know, everyth- Marty and I were on the rec board coming out of the recession and in the recession, and it was awful. And, you know, this puts us in even a, you know, a bigger hole that we know that's coming, right? It's either coming in a year or two years or three years, the next recession. I don't know, I just, I really want to make sure that we look at the entire picture before we lighten this up.
Thanks, Heather. Luis?
Uh, no, 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 I, I completely, uh, yeah, I agree. I, I am concerned about the costs increasing as we approach, you know, once we get into this, uh, whether it's just operating, construction. And so I, I, I'm leaning two, but I would reluctantly consider three, um, just because I think we are going to need the additional um, funds to cover both, you know, uh, the debt obligation and, and operating costs. Um, so that's where I'm at.
Why?
Yeah, I, I share the O and M concern, um, definitely, but I see two as a starters being the best option. Um, the upside for us is the assumed rating and the upside for the voter acceptance is that, you know, we've been telling them that we're pretty flush, right? So, you know, they're not going to push back, um, if, if we go with, uh, option two. And I think that would probably gain the most acceptance to give us a leg up to move this thing forward anyway. So that's kind of where I see it, given the choices that we've been presented tonight.
All right, and, and we don't need to take a vote, this general guidance tonight. I mean, I'm hearing that two seems to be where the common agreement is, and, uh, I'm not seeing anybody shake their head. So Melanie and Jason, does that feel like the guidance you need, and Eric?
Yes, very helpful, thank you.
Great.
Just one really quick clarifying question that's got a really easy answer, just does our-
Just one really quick clarifying question that's got a really easy answer, just does our current rec tax have a sunset?
I don't think so.
Okay.
We voted again and got rid of the sunset.
We got rid of the sunset, great. Excellent.
Thank you very much for joining us and explaining that. I feel very much well informed and have a great night.
Thank you very much.
You too.
Hey.
Thank you.
Now we'll move on to the last item and we're going to go through the budget line by line.
Let's do it.
Budget's gonna be at the start of the.
To go to get donuts.
Was able to finish in thirty six minutes.
Ben, we're in your memo for the increases, decreases, they were all things that you spoke about. Since the October twelfth meeting, we've had a couple of minor little things that actually have happened in the last week. Property taxes are going to increase slightly, about a thousand dollars in the general fund. And seven hundred and seventy five in the streetscape. I just received that from Garfield County today. So wastewater, we're going to have about five thousand more in wages due to. Some of our employees getting certifications going on. The good news is preliminary sales tax that I pulled today. Through November, right now, we are holding year to date at twenty nine point four. And we were projecting ending the year at thirty, so we're going to be very, very close on that. Any questions anybody had going through this? It also had a supplemental in here. You're still going to be holding in your general fund right about sixty five point nine for your fund balance. Projected for next year. The supplemental. You know, various things arise, we always know that they're going to. This year was great with the ACRF funding and then we allocated it to wastewater and water that made a difference. You had two hundred thousand for the Kaufman Ranch in the capital construction fund. You know, basic line is for your supplemental, we cannot spend more than we budget. So when we do have the extra revenues, for whatever reason, grants, taking it out of savings, whatever. We have to increase our expenditure budget to show that otherwise. The state and the auditors get a little upset about it. So that's it in a nutshell. We'll do all the ordinances, resolution, lots of detail. I can spend three hours on the fourteenth on the budget if you would like. But any questions? Does anybody have?
Anybody?
I appreciate when we get to this point and not surprises.
Have surprises at this point.
There may need to be a little bit of adjustment based on the contract we just signed.
Actually not, I'd already estimated that amount.
Okay.
I sit in my office all day.
Really quick question, Renee, just you just said that we're looking at sales tax revenues being up thirty percent?
For the year, just the sales tax, yes.
But then total revenues at the beginning you're saying are one point five percent above last year.
But you have various other things that are going into that.
Right.
Not just.
So a lot of things went down.
Some things did, yes.
Okay, still have a hard time with that. And then the tobacco tax, just because I've got such grand ideas for it now. Did to bring in three hundred and twenty five thousand and then a little lower, I think you said a three hundred thousand dollar. You know, kind of transfer due to our MOU and I thought we had bumped that down to two fifty was my memory.
We also this year used ninety on on the Hope Center. Next year, they're hoping to get that grant back again, but they may or may not.
Okay, I guess I just want to make sure we're not. Over allocating the tobacco tax revenue, especially if we start to think about other things and that we set that group up with the MOU. At a sustainable level.
Well, I think, yeah, so I think we did that by only committing.
Two fifty, okay, yeah.
Any other questions? Great job, Renee, thank you. So next week or next meeting, we will finalize the budget for official adoption, so that'll be a big read. We will be considering the aquatics facility as Kevin mentioned with in more detail. We will have a work session with Clear to talk about end of just our typical end of year kind of update. Anything else, Kevin? I know you just showed me this, but those were the three. There was one other small thing. Yeah, remember, it's it's okay, but it'll be a full meeting. And right now we're planning for the December twenty eighth meeting. The twenty first will be a work session on short term rentals. With one of our citizens kind of leading or writing the memo. And then the twenty eighth will be a Zoom meeting just to pay bills, so hopefully at least four of us can attend that. Short one. Okay, anything else? All right, we are adjourned.
So on the twenty eighth, would it be good to have it like at eight AM, Zoom meeting at eight AM or what time do you think you would want to do that? Eight AM?
I'm more willing to do nine than eight AM while I'm on vacation.